Good evening. Thank all of you for being here today. Today is December the 5th, 2023. My thought for today is, "For unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord, glory to God in the highest and on earth peace, goodwill towards all, towards men." It is approximately seven o'clock now. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask if Pastor Cott, if you would, please come on up, sir, from Salem United Methodist Church, and if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself, and if you would, pray for our community, please. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and citizens of Newton County and guests, thank you for the opportunity to come here today on behalf of Salem United Methodist over on Salem Road. We appreciate the work you all do and the opportunity, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to open this meeting with a word of prayer. Maybe we all bow our heads and pray. Gracious God, we ask that you would give us this evening your grace, your patience, and your wisdom as we consider matters of business that affect the lives of every person in this county. We would ask that as we proceed that your Spirit would suffuse these proceedings and that we would meet with, together with, with a sense of unity and a sense of purpose and come to decisions that will bring glory to you and, and better life to all citizens here. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, sir. I'm gonna ask now Commissioner Edwards, if you would, lead us in our pledge, please. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda. I have two items I would like to add to the agenda. The first one would be to add back on the District III Tax Assessor Appointment of Ms. Cynthia Butler. It was taken off the agenda, and I would like to add that back under the consent agenda as we have been doing for decades.
You making that into form of a motion?
Yes, I move that Ms. Cynthia Butler be added back on to the consent agenda as the Tax Assessor Appointment for District III.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Sanders and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just to give you a little bit of information, and I'll try to make it brief, but it's a lot of information. My appointment was taken off of the agenda, and I was told that it was taken off per instructions of individuals in the county. Every year or every six years, each commissioner has had the opportunity to appoint their individual from their district for the Tax Assessor Board. But when it came to 2023, when it's time for District III to make their appointment, the Tax Assessor Board contacted our county attorney to deliberate to try to change what has been done over years. I have seeked information, you know, I do my research. For decades, this appointment has been placed under the consent agenda with no discussion, no legal interference. The individual that's currently on the Tax Assessor Board has been on the board for 24 years in District III and does not even live in the district currently. And if he's watching, Mr. Berry, I truly thank you for your service. For 24 years, that's remarkable for a resident to donate their time and their efforts to be on the board. But I do think it's fair that residents have the opportunity to sit on a citizen board and have that opportunity to serve their community. As I look at the board, now, as we are taught as commissioners, we're taught the perception thereof, and I'm only gonna speak on the perception thereof. If you look at the board, the board consists of five males. The only individual that is a female on that board is a secretary. So are we stating that a female cannot sit on the Tax Assessor Board, the perception thereof? Why in 2023, when District III is wanting to put their appointment, now, I've been asked for a whole year who my appointment will be. I was asked, "Commissioner, did you wanna do it in November? Did you wanna do it in December?" And as soon as I said my appointment, all H.E. double hockey sticks broke loose. And so that is an issue. It goes back to 2021 when the, there was an appointment for me to become Vice Chair that rolls over. I was the first commissioner ever to be placed on the agenda and discussed if I had the qualifications to be Vice Chair when it has been put under the consent agenda for years. I am the first. So it's kinda like having PTSD, it's going back. So in regards to that, I have pulled the minutes, I have pulled all the information. In 2017, when Mr. Berry was appointed, he was placed under the consent agenda. It was motioned by my predecessor Nancy Schultz under the consent agenda, and it was seconded by former Commissioner Sims. Unanimous vote, no discussion, no attorney involved. So this is why I'm asking for my constituent who, to be placed back on the agenda, who was contacted and asked for all of her information to attend the meeting tonight to be acknowledged as the District III Appointment for the Tax Assessor Board. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. That motion failed. I seek a motion, please, that we approve the agenda as stated. You have another?
Yes, sir. The other motion I would like to add, and just to give you a little bit of information. ACCG sent us a resolution that was sent to all counties in September, I wanna say it was September 19th.
Then, we already, we doing a resolution tonight?
So you're gonna do it tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, excuse everything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Make a motion to amend the agenda to include discussion on the appointment of the tax...
It's already on the agenda.
Oh, it is? Okay.
I don't think it's just for the...
What item is that? I didn't see it.
Eight. For the county manager.
Is it discussion and a vote? Cause this is the first and ever that we're having a discussion. Cause in 2021, I voted for the individual to be placed on the Tax Assessor Board in another district. Not once did y'all have a discussion, not once did y'all take it off the consent agenda. Why is there an issue? Why is this board so important, the perception thereof, where someone who sat on there for 24 years does not wanna come off after their, after their term has expired?
Thank you.
What is the issue?
Thank you. I seek a motion that we approve the agenda as stated, please. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and a second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed three, two. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so. This is agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You may comment this time. Please state your name, your address for the record. Please, you have three minutes to do so.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Butler. I live at 105 Rodney Way, Covington, Georgia. I am here today. Could you bring me that paper right there? Right there on the desk. I am here today because I was contacted by Jackie Smith to get all my contact information to be appointed to the Tax Assessor's Board. Now, I don't understand why such an issue that someone that has served for 24 years does not wanna come off the board, but they wanna stay on the board. This is what I need to tell everyone. First thing, I need you all to know what my qualifications are. I have a BS degree in Business Administration. All my experience in corporate structure was in management. I supervise management for Gerald Motors. I supervise management for Grady Health System. I retired from Grady Health System after 15 years of service in Atlanta, Georgia. I retired as purchasing manager. Now, this is my questions to the board and to Jackie Smith. This is what I need to understand. Why my name was not on the agenda, being appointed to the Tax Assessor's Board when I was contacted, told to be here today, to be acknowledged? Does the commissioners in each district have the right to make their appointments to the district? Should a board member live in the district they represent? Is there any discrimination going on up here in Newton County? Why you don't want a black female on the Tax Assessor's Board that is well qualified? I need to know if you all are being discriminatory. I need to know that from the board, and I need these questions answered by Jackie Smith. She's the one contacted me, said my name would be on the agenda. I need her to answer all these questions. Is a discrimination case up here for me? Cynthia Butler, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Next, agenda topics only. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Carlita Reed. I live at 55 Tully Road, Covington, Georgia. First of all, I wanna thank you for answering all my emails. I really appreciate you, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Cooper. I filled out an application for a business grant, a small business grant, and you stated that I did everything right, but present my application again. I didn't know you all had opened up the time to resubmit my application, and they denied me. Y'all denied me. You said I did everything right. Y'all prayed every meeting, every meeting. God said, "You honor me with your lips, but your hearts are far from me." He said, "Repent." This is from God. You cannot run the city of Covington going in your own wisdom. God said his wisdom will stand. Man wisdom will fall. This is a great city. We have to stand for righteousness. You can't pick and choose who you wanna help. That's not fair. God does not pick and choose when he wanna help us, does he? Does he? He has no favorites. All I'm saying is do what's right. This is a great city. We supposed to stand on righteousness. We can't do that when we live in a compromising life. God said, "Repent." It's getting ready to get really bad in this earth. God said he's bringing a wind. It's gonna be a famine in the land. He said, "Get water and food." But you can't pick and choose who you wanna help. Woman of God, stand on righteousness. We need somebody to stand. We need people to stand in righteousness. You all are men and women of God. You have to have the character of Jesus Christ, and I don't see that. And I'm not mad because of that. Because if you didn't deny me, I wouldn't be here. I am led by the Spirit of the Lord. He speaks to me. I have a true relationship with him. You all have to walk in righteousness and walk in integrity. This is a great city, and all of y'all are great men and women of God, but when you don't have the character of God, your hearts are wicked, and that's not God. We gotta love one another, cause God love us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Uh, next is the chairman's report. So guys, these are agenda topics only. Agenda topics only.
Yes, my name Joseph Reed. Live on Village Drive. You know, I was, I wanted to ask y'all about the grant. Cause when I filled out information out for the grant, I didn't really know, you know, what I had to have, but I did get everything in, and I was just, and they was telling me that I, you know, I made more money. One year, the first year, I didn't make, you know, I made low, but it went up a little bit. So I just wanted to know the requirements of, you know, the amount of money that you had to make to be able to get the grant, because they denied me. And they told me that if I tried to appeal it, they were gonna still deny it, but it wasn't that much money. So I mean, you know, and people pointed out that somebody probably got the grant that made more money than I did, so, you know, I'm just, I just wanna ask what was the requirement of the amount of money that you had to make to be able to get the grant, cause I didn't get the grant, and I needed the grant for my business, you know? So I, please, somebody answer my question now or later?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda to, agenda topics only. Agenda topics only.
My name is Geraldine Strong, and I'm here today, tonight for the senior repair home. And I've been trying to get some repairments done on my home. I need a roof on my house. And I turned in some contractors, but they were denied. So she asked me to send some more in, and everyone that I called, no one wants to come because they said that they're no longer with the program. So what must I do?
Thank you, ma'am. Someone will get back with you from the county manager's office?
Who would that might be?
Mr. Cooper, he will get back with you from the county manager's office.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. Tonight, we have some special guests with us tonight. We're gonna ask Pastor Cott and his team if they would, please come on up. Ms. Walker here tonight. Ms. Walker, if you would, please come on up. Thank you. As you, as you know, we are bringing the nonprofits and the 501(c)(3)'s who receive funding from the opera funds. We're gonna bring, we're bringing them before the board to give a report on what they're doing with the funds. And they are here tonight from Salem United Methodist Church out on the western side of the county to give a quick update on what they're doing. So thank you so much, guys, for being here tonight. It was a pleasure meeting with you, and you have the floor.
Chairman Barnes, commission members, my name is David Cott. I'm the pastor at Salem United Methodist. We are at, on Salem Road, just north of Brown Bridge Road, on the west side of the county. We're about a stone's throw from the, from the Rockdale County line. We have been there, this coming summer, we'll be celebrating the fact that we have been there for 200 years. Salem Methodist has been part of the community for 200 years, not just as a house of worship, but as a center of community activity. We are, have been, we have been in that area for, to, to offer a place where people can gather, whether it be religious groups, organizations, nonprofits, any kind of local business is welcome to use our facilities. And we have been there for all this time, and we came to the county for a grant to renovate our kitchen and fellowship hall, which is used regularly by a, a large number of local groups. We've had scouts there. We have blood drives there. We have had vaccinations there. The county Board of Elections regularly hosts the local elections there. And it's all very important because on the west side of the county, there's very few places where people can gather at a reasonable price. And so we try to make it at an absolute minimum expense for any organization to come and to use our facilities. So our, as you can see from our pictures there, we had a kitchen that was a mix of 30, 40, 50-year-old hodgepodge, and we had a fellowship hall, which was getting run down. And we wanted to continue to offer the very best to the, the citizens of the community. And so we've used the grant that you have so graciously given us to completely renovate the kitchen and to completely renovate the hall. Sorry. And not only have we used local contractors for that, we also used as much in-house labor as we had available to, to make the money go a little bit further. And so we have used the, almost the entire amount of the grant. By the, by the deadline, we will have used the entire amount. And we would just like to first say thank you very much for your support. We have a historic congregation, and we just are so very, very grateful that you continue to support us, but also to welcome you at the county, any nonprofit agency, any organization, any business actually, that would like to come to, to use the, our facilities. So again, we thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I know, I know Ms. Herman, I know you played a major part in this as well, so I wanna give you a couple of seconds to say something as well.
It, it was quite a project. We, these, these only show the before and after. It doesn't show where we actually gutted the kitchen and where we had to have gas lines moved, a new electricity put in. Our old asbestos floor. We, we just discovered a lot about the, the room and the whole facility that we didn't know. And it took a while. It took a lot of legwork for it to all come together. And, but we're certainly very proud of it, and we're so grateful. We really are. And we're so glad to be able to open it to the public, and not just low cost, but free. We have some programs there that are also free. And so we're just very, very grateful. And we hope to be there another 200 years.
Listen, we, we are grateful for the partnership, and we look forward to continuing the partnership with you guys. Thank you so much for what you're doing in the community tonight. Guys, can we make it quick? Cause we're gonna, we pushing up on the, we got one more to come, and, yeah, we pushing up on zoning. But we are so thankful, the commissioners are welcome to come out and visit your location, guys. Y'all are welcome to go out and visit their location. Their doors are open to you all the time. Someone's at the church all the time. So again, we are so thankful for you guys for being here tonight. And we hate to rush you off, but we do have one more church coming behind you. Thank you. Uh, next, we do have Pleasant View Baptist Church. Ms. Vender Maddox, if you would, please come on up. Thank you, guys, for being here. We know y'all are doing some great things as well. You wanna tell us a little bit about what you guys are doing?
Thank you. Thank you all so much, Commissioner Banks and all the county commissioners. I'm on grandma duty tonight, so just bear with us, okay? We, my name is Vender Maddox, and I'm chairperson of Board of Directors at Pleasant View Baptist Church. Our pastor had a vision to have a state-of-the-art facility. Our youth program grew from like two children, maybe three, in December of last year. Now we're up to 75 youth that was serving and sometimes more every week. He had a vision to turn our fellowship hall for a larger state-of-the-art facility for the kids to be able to come, be themselves, what we call a judgment-free zone. Now, you know, banks don't deal in visions. Banks deal in bank statements. They deal, they deal in, you know, information that shows, you know, your financial situation. So when this grant came along, we were like, we've gotta apply for this. We've gotta apply for this, cause we have so many plans for what we want to do, and coming out of a pandemic, you know, it was, it was tough. It was tough trying to, you know, get the bank to see our position. But we thank you all. We thank you all because now our youth, that's the facility, have a state-of-the-art facility for them to come on Sundays there during the week. It's just amazing, all the things that are going on there now. We invite you guys out. Several of you could not come. That's, that's fine. But you are still welcome to come. No one's at our church every day, but someone is there on Sunday starting at 10 o'clock. The youth are in full effect, are in full force. What you're seeing is complete renovation of our fellowship hall. Now it's called our Student Center. We have a youth pastor, Minister Orr. He's at another youth conference. He couldn't be here tonight, and our pastor had a, had an accident on the way over, over getting coming over here, but he's fine. But we just wanna thank you guys for, you know, for all the help, for helping us to provide for our youth a state-of-the-art program. We're doing a lot of great things on that corner there, on Sunnyside Drive and Flat Shores Road. Just like the other church, our church is 171 years old. And when we moved to this facility, naturally, you know, there were a lot of things we had to do that were, that were undercover that we didn't know about, like electrical and this kinda thing. And what they're not showing you, did you have a picture of the playground?
You know what?
No picture of the playground, but the playground was also included, you know, as part of that grant. We are, right now, finally found someone to put in our walk-in cooler and freezer. And that's gonna help us in our food pantry program to be able to store more food and be able to help more people, because all we got right now, two or three refrigerators, two or three freezers, we can't really sustain and help the community because it's not enough places to store the food we need to purchase to help everybody. But once again, I wanna thank each and every one of you for, you know, for, for all working with us and allowing us to be able to, to get this grant and to be able to service our community.
Thank you. We, before you go, we do thank you guys for what you're doing in the community and providing for our kids, and not just our kids, our seniors as well. I do encourage all the commissioners to, if you have a chance to go by and visit with them on Sundays. They're doing an excellent job, and so thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
As we do have one proclamation, we're gonna try to read it in the minutes before zoning. Ms. Hamper, if you would, please. Dr. Izzy, if you're here tonight, if you would, please come on up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mental health is an issue that impacts all of us, whether it be directly or indirectly. It is incumbent of us to make sure that people in need of mental health care and assistance get the help and care they need through mental health reform. We're asking our governor and the General Assembly through this resolution to assist and support our 159 counties in this particular effort. I can go on and begin reading the resolution? Resolution urging the governor and general assembly of Georgia to continue efforts to reform and improve mental health services for the citizens of Georgia. Whereas being the constitutional level of government closest to their constituents, Georgia counties are on the front lines of responding to mental health issues within the community as well as the development of mental health reform efforts. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners supports efforts designed to provide every citizen in need to have accessible, affordable, and adequate mental health services. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners is grateful for the efforts of Georgia's executive, legislative, and judicial branches in working toward mental health reform in recent years, such as passing the HB or the House Bill 1013 in 2022, and introduction of the House Bill 520 in 2023. Chief Ju, Chief Justice Boggs's work on jail diversion initiatives and Governor Kemp's commitment to expanding mental health resources in schools for children and young adults. And whereas despite these prior steps and successes, the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes that there is still a tremendous amount of work for the citizens of Newton County and other citizens across Georgia to receive adequate health care for mental health and substance abuse disorders. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Newton County Board of Commissioners that Newton County Government reaffirms its commitment to reforming and improving mental health services for its citizens and all citizens in the state of Georgia. Be it further resolved that the Newton County Board of Commissioners specifically urges the governor and general assembly to continue efforts in the 2024 session of Georgia General Assembly to enhance Georgia citizens' access to vital mental health services, including the provision of state budgetary funding for additional behavioral health crisis centers across the state, additional co-responder units, and other resources to assist those with mental health and substance abuse disorders. Be it further resolved than an X... Be it further resolved, then an executed copy of this resolution will be read into the minutes and provided for official record-keeping of the Newton County Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes and records. So resolved this fifth day of December 2023 by our Honorable Chairman Marcelo Baines.
I'll just share with people, first of all, thank you Chairman Baines and to the Board of Commissioners for making mental health a priority for us as Newton County and to continue to move forward. Also, I would just like to thank you all again for appointing me to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council as the only Newton County member, and I look forward to continuing to support you all on mental health efforts.
Thank you so much. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. It is actually 7:31. We're going to enter into our zoning tonight. Thank you guys for your patience.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Our first petition this evening, it's old business. This was first heard back in October and tabled at applicant's request, so we're hearing it tonight. It is a FLU 23-00005. It is a future land use map amendment. The current land use map or existing land use map is rural residential. Proposed is going to be development node. The existing zoning is agricultural residential and it is in the Alcovi River watershed. Location is Highway 278 and Highway 142. Tax ID number is 0099-009. Total acreage is 159 approximately. This is located in Commissioner District 5. Current owner is Saltwell Corners LLC and the petitioner this evening is Randy Vincent. And just a brief history, this was heard at a planning commission on July 25th of this year, and it was tabled at the request of the commission so that the applicant could get additional information. It was then heard again in September 26th before the planning commission, and they voted to deny the petition by a vote of four to zero. And on 10/3, or October 3rd, the Board of Commissioners, it was tabled again at, you know, the request of the applicant for 60 days, and that brings us to today. And again, it is a future land use map amendment request from rural residential to development node. It's going to be on 159 acres, and the intent is to seek this amendment so that they can further seek a rezoning to a cord or a community-oriented residential development. I just have the history there on the subject site. It is located in the following character area, emerging suburban, and I won't read through all of this. It is included in your packet, but it does support, this particular character area does support a development node, which is what they are seeking. And you have the, your cord is an appropriate zoning according to this character area. It is also in the live-work character area according to the 2023 comprehensive plan, which again supports a development node and cord. This, due to the size of this project, it did meet the threshold for a DRI or Development of Regional Impact Study. And the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, this is just a summary of their report, now just briefly skim through it, and they're saying the applicant is proposing the construction of a mixed-use development with approximately 610 residential units and 35,000 square feet of commercial space on a total 155-acre site. Development would consist of a combination of single-family detached homes, attached townhomes, mixed-use live-work buildings in a traditional town center configuration. And the mixed-use portion of the site is situated along Highway 142. There are going to be five flex units, which they are proposing, which will include 108 condominiums and as well as office space and commercial space. And you also have commercial buildings, a town green, and parking spaces. The remaining developed portion of the proposed site would include 294 single-family detached lots, 146 townhome units, three small green space areas, recreational areas, clubhouse, pool, tennis courts, and so on. And then has a side plan designates two different detached single-family lot sizes, and the standard single-family detached lots would be 4 to 50 feet wide and 100 to 110 feet deep. The traffic study was not completed at the time. I know, we don't have it at this time, but they have proposed some numbers. They're projecting 1,220 peak hour trips per day from the proposed development. And this is just the findings continued. The commission used their regional plans, six characteristics, while reviewing this plan, and they did find that the six characteristics were met according to what was proposed. And these included, one, it enhances economic mobility and competitiveness; two, it elevates public health and equity; three, it supports and adds value to existing communities; four, it creates housing that is diverse, adequate, equitable, and affordable; five, it includes transportation choices; and six, it's well-connected with existing and planned transportation options. The commission did have recommendations as well. They have recommended interconnectivity with the adjoining parcels, and the developer should consider adding additional access points on Highway 278 to provide a better traffic flow. So in conclusion, 159 acres is currently undeveloped. Pursuant to the emerging suburban and the live-work character area appropriate land uses, development node is a suitable land use request. And the applicant's intent is to rezonate to a cord, which will consist of the mixed uses, residential and commercial. However, by amending the flume to development node, the density of the Alcovi watershed will no longer apply per Section 420060 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which I have below in italics, which I just read. Section B says the minimum lot size for any lot within the district shall be two acres. The minimum lot sizes shall not apply in the designated development nodes or the properties zoned as Highway 278 mixed use. Further, the project must have sewer access, which applicant has not secured at this time. And speaking with the city of Covington, they have had a few projects ahead. A traffic study also has to be completed per the county's ordinance as well as the recommendations from the commission. An applicant also has to seek approval from GDOT for entrances into the development. So should the board decide to approve this petition, staff is of the opinion that the future land use amendment, it may be appropriate in the area based on the character areas in the comm plan. However, consideration should also be given to the Alcovi River watershed's requirements and the ability to meet and secure sewer requirements for the development. And there are no conditions of zoning placed on this because it's a future land use map amendment. It's just a planning tool, but should the request be approved in a petition filed for rezoning, the conditions of zoning would be applied at that time. This is an aerial view of where the parcel is located, on Highway 142 down here and 278. We have a current zoning agricultural residential. The future land use map, which is what they're seeking to amend, is rural residential currently. It is in the Alcovi River watershed. This is a survey of the parcel, and this is the concept plan as submitted by the applicant. And that is staff's reported. And Chairman, we did not do the public hearing on it previously.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open it up for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have 10 minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you have 10 minutes to do so.
I'm Randy Vincent. I live at 450 Jenkins Road, Covington. Some of you know I have been involved in countywide planning efforts and development efforts for about 28 years here in Newton County, and have been involved in a lot of design workshops or charrettes, as they're known in the profession, where we go out into the county and we seek input from residents about how they would like to see the county grow or develop. And without fail, at all of these workshops that we had over these many years, everybody said we love the small-town character of Covington and we love the rural atmosphere of the woods and the pastures and the cattle and the farms. So your Economic Development Group has been very successful over the last several years, and you have recruited some very big prominent industries here. And so the growth is coming. Your comprehensive plan update has projected, as you all know, a great deal of growth over the next couple decades. So how do we accommodate that growth without destroying the character, the rural character and the small-town character of Covington while we grow? And the best way to do that is by duplicating what we love. We love Covington. We love the rural character. So you can't grow across the farmland on two-acre lots and maintain that rural feel. It's going to feel like a subdivision throughout the entire county, and everybody is going to be dependent on an automobile to get to everything that they need to do at every time. So if we can develop a compact pedestrian-friendly mixed-use village at this location, as the comprehensive plan recommends, we feel we can accommodate the growth, duplicate what we have here in Covington out there by building a new, another town square that will become, you know, the place to be for east-side high school students and parents, family, before and after sporting events and plays and concerts and everything else out there. The square will be of comparable size as the square right here in Covington. The businesses surrounding it will have residential condominiums above the business areas or flex spaces that we're calling for. Your comprehensive plan recommends that, building more flex spaces in the county that will enable business growth and development over the years. The compact pedestrian-friendly mixed-use villages enable people to walk to at least some of their daily needs, therefore reducing car trips. If we sprawl, we will never be able to reduce those car trips. We're always going to need to get in the car for everything we do. This, by having the complete mixed-use and pedestrian-friendly village, will enable people to age in place. They can walk, not needing a car for some of their, the pharmacy or the doctor's office or the restaurants or dry cleaners, that sort of thing is what we see going in this development. And also by developing compactly, it's enabling us to maintain over 35%. It's actually closer to 40 or a little over 40% of the land as undisturbed forest, that will have nature trails through it, a little trailhead at the 142 that will be able to share with the rest of the county. Another item that's in your comprehensive plan is a recommendation for finding recreational opportunities throughout the county. And perhaps even more important, the development of compact mixed-use development is the highest-paying tax payer in the county per acre than anything else. Any of the industries, SKC, Takata, it exceeds all of that. The recent study done by the city of Covington for cost of service delivery has found that Clark's Grove mixed-use neighborhood right here in Covington is the highest-paying taxpayer in the county, and by 45 times. So this is a sort of development that will enable you to grow and continue to pay for the two-acre development that does not pay for itself. That is very expensive development to maintain over the long haul and will bankrupt the county if we pursue that route in its entirety. I'm going to reserve the rest of my time.
So it's a total of 10 minutes that's allowed it? Yeah, so.
Let me, Tommy Craig's my name. I'm happy to be here before you tonight. Thank you for your courtesy. Judge Greeley Ellis was a close friend of mine. He served this county for many, many years as the chief judge of the Superior Courts, and he was a good friend. He summoned me to his house one day. He was not the kind of person to ask you to come over. And when I got there, he told me that he wanted me to introduce me to Ed Hutter. Ed is here tonight. And he said, Tommy, he said, I've got a tract of land, 160 acres, that I have owned for over 60 years. I bought it when it was rural property and I've held it as an investment. I think now is the time for me to have it sold, have it rezoned to an appropriate use, given the development that's occurred in the area, given the fact that there's a new high school across the street from the property. And I'd like to see it turned into money for the benefit of my widow-to-be and my children and grandchildren. And so he asked me to work with Ed and to try to realize that objective. That's why I'm here. Happily, the county decided that the Board of Education located the school in the vicinity of Judge Ellis's property, right across the street. You can see it on this picture here. And the school of necessity had to have sewer extended to it. So the Water and Sewer Authority tapped into the line, come from the Four County Park, and took carry sewer temporarily to the city's water treatment plant. Now Baxter, or its successor Shire, has got, that capacity in that line has got to be returned to them. So the county entered into a service delivery agreement with the city of Covington, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, and agreed that the city would take over sewer in this particular area and that the sewer would be provided to the high school to relieve that line. It would be a gravity feed line, and that's a new line that will serve Morgan Farms, which you approved a flume for at your last meeting, and it would also serve Judge Ellis's As Sheena told you a minute ago, the plan that we have is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan that you ordered and adopted in December. It is consistent with the recommendations regarding the development of regional impact that came from Northeast Georgia Planning Commission. It is consistent with good planning, contemporary practice and procedure. Now, the only thing that Sheena said is we need some clarification with regard to sewer. And I'd be glad to hold forth on that if there are any questions about sewer availability in the area. Any questions?
No, it's not a time for questions. He is an opportunity. Yeah, you can go ahead and present your case, sir.
Let me just say, the city had a study done recently and it said it would be 2027 until sewer was supplied to the area. The city made a mistake and included in the Carter-Sloop Study of Wright's Creek the Rhine Millsap property. The Rhine Millsap property, they're proposing 1,773 single-family homes and 1,500 multifamily homes. That would be on Elks Club Road. The village centers, the development nodes that are proposed by your comprehensive plan are all attached to and front on US Highway 278. That's the corridor, that's the spine. And there are only two, the Morgan Farm and Judge Ellis's property, that are so designated. The next time you hit one, it's Neil Nixon's place out on 278 and Georgia 11. So I just would like to say the city is revisiting that issue. They realize that the, well... They realize that the, well, I think they realize the political reality of the fact that this board is highly unlikely that you're going to permit fifteen-hundred-and-four apartments on Elks Club Road. So, I think that that plan is unrealistic. It would amount to a foolish expenditure by the city to provide sewer service for that area. And we are willing to assume the risk with regard to whether sewer is provided to the property. We don't need it for twenty-four months.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also allowed ten minutes for those that would like to oppose. If you would like to oppose, if you would, please come and state your name and address for the record, please. If you would like to oppose tonight.
My name is Dave Norton, four-three-five-seven, Highway one forty-two, Newborn. In the standards of review of the Newton County zoning ordinance and the Newton County Development Regulations, both state the purpose of the boards is to protect and promote the public health, moral, safety, and general welfare of the county. Division six-hundred, Section six-twenty-zero-sixty of the Newton County Zoning Ordinance states the board to review the population density patterns and possible increase or overtaxing of the load on public facilities, including but not limited to schools, utilities, and streets. Of all those zoning requests for large projects, how often does someone speak in favor that does not stand to benefit financially from the project, or a friend that may, or others that may like, may come up in future requests? Beware, they will sugarcoat it when their only objective is profit, not what's best for the community. I visited Clark's Grove to see what this would look like. Let me tell you what I saw and did not see. I saw apartment-for-rent signs. I saw empty retail spaces. I saw large, expensive homes, hence the value, the tax base that he was referring to. I did not see a place for a chicken coop, a place to park my boat, or garden space at these homes. The only trees were in the small front yard. They were so small that if you got a snow and you wanted to build a snowman, you'd have to steal your neighbor's snow to build one of any size. I had a very good and civil conversation with Mr. Vincent on one of my trips there, as he is the leasing agent there, if I have his title correct there. He mentioned that some occupants are widows and elderly that no longer are capable of or desire to do yard work, and some of the high-tech types that had no time for it, which I could see to an extent, but not on the scale that is being proposed for this project and others. We need people that are looking to put down roots here and stay for the long term, as they are more likely to take pride and be involved in the community and county. And this is not the type of housing they are looking for. At last month's meeting, Commissioner Sanders mentioned, at the end of the meeting in the comments section, workforce housing, teachers living in cars, that they could not afford the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes on three acres. The new apartments on two-seventy-eight by the old Walmart are over fifteen-hundred for one bedroom. What is the average sale price for these homes that's being proposed tonight? And don't forget to ask about HOA fees, to see who can afford to live here. Does the current petitioner have a letter from the City of Covington describing sewage expansion beyond the Alcovee River? I spoke with someone there today who said there are no plans to expand, and I've heard that the city will not give such a letter, even to the gentleman, the attorney that spoke last month's meeting, that said it was be expanded. Also, at last month's meeting, Commissioner Mason mentioned smart housing. What's smart about cramming as many people into as tight a space as you can? That's what they do in Japan. Also, he mentioned lower property tax due to increase in revenue. I challenge this board to find such an example. All I found was that the government had a surplus due to increased property-value taxes and was therefore able to roll back some of it if they didn't increase the county budget. All this due to rising home values. Thank you very much, y'all. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Laura Bertram, and I'm not here on behalf of the Family Connection. I do live at forty-four Valley Trail in Covington, and I am here as a resident of the Deerfield subdivision. I appreciate the opportunity to let you know my concerns about the pending developments immediately adjacent to our community. I was living here in the early two thousands when the Board of Commissioners really made a decision to allow development on the west side of the county without the appropriate planning. And we know the disasters that that has caused. In twenty-oh-six, the WIC population with the Health Department tripled in six months. Twenty-oh-seven, Newton County was listed as the fastest-growing county in the nation. And Newton's rate of childbirth grew seven times, not childbirth, but children, grew seven times faster than the entire state of Georgia. What this led to, as the recession hit in two thousand and ten, was that Newton was listed as the tenth-most-stressed county in the nation. It has the highest foreclosure rate in the state of Georgia. And it looks like right now that our economic situation in the United States is pretty concerning, and I would say caution. Huh? Oh, okay, okay. So, just as recovery was happening in two thousand and seven, COVID struck. And that is where this county, we never had the structure to take, the infrastructure, to take care of the families that we invited in. If we invite this many people in without the appropriate infrastructure and the public services and the school system that is able to accommodate them, we will be in worse shape than we are today. And you can see on the economics of education, the most critical thing to determine a child's school success are four things: transportation, housing, health, and financial equity. The fact of the matter is, is that it's wonderful to have four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. Our firefighters, our policemen, our teachers cannot afford it. They do, they, to live in cloud-up apartment complexes is not their desire either. But we are also not taking care of the housing needs of the people who are already here, who have low income, who are struggling with crime, who are struggling with health, who are struggling just in general. Please, let us build up that infrastructure. And I ask you that you deny this on that we have not been able to address our previous growth. And I am concerned that if we continue to build without first planning on how to increase access to transportation, health services, housing, and financial assistance, the county will lose its battle to establish a healthy, inclusive community. And I think I have worked with many of you to do just that, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. Next, please. Guys, I want to ask you, if you would, silence your phone. We are in a public meeting, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Kim Chu, sixty Quail Valley Social Circle. I've been to several of these meetings here of late, and I've given a lot of thought as to what I wanted to say this evening about this development. However, I'm not going to point out the countless reasons why this development should not be built, because those have already been stated. But based on the prior sessions, it doesn't appear to carry any weight on what this body decides. I'm instead going to talk about the political theater that appears to be at the forefront of the decisions, like the one in front of you today. I want to start by answering a question that Commissioner Sanders raised in the last meeting. She asked why people didn't fight for the east side, like those that are here today doing for the west side. There is an answer to that question. They did. In fact, I used to live off of Salem Road. I, like many others, expressed concern regarding the overdevelopment in that part of the county. But no matter the argument, the pointing out of the existing overlays, regulations, easements, or the like, it didn't seem to matter. What did matter, and what seems to be in play again, is the who is behind the request, the tit-for-tat mentality, back-room conversations that lead to scripted sermons from the BOC pulpit, and the appearance of political favors that are owed. These kinds of things are the direct reason why people lose faith in their political leaders and become indifferent, and for many, give up the fight. Because they know when these types of things are in play, it doesn't matter what laws, regulations, or ordinance in effect, because the people never win the political power game. I know you've seen the signs that say, "Don't Conyers are Covington." The community does not want to see the slow erosion of the thing that makes this area special. People are very concerned over the quality of life and the type of town that overdevelopment will turn this special place into. I hear from some people, "You can't stop development." And my response is, "Why not?" When you, when do you say that we don't have the infrastructure, the police, the firefighters, the schools, and even the healthcare to support all of these proposed developments that continue to pour in? When do you stop the influx of new people and start serving those that are already here? I would go as far to say that the BOC should put a moratorium on residential building until what has already been approved is completed and the impact to the community can be visualized and measured. I would also suggest that the BOC hold a series of town hall meetings for those in Districts one and five, so that the people have more than ten minutes to discuss their concerns and work together to find a framework that works for the community and not against it. I have no idea how you guys plan to vote tonight. I will ask that you listen to the people, not the special interests or the power players that have controlled this county for years. But the people that this decision will affect is what you should consider. We are not against development. We are against this type of development that does not follow existing ordinances or regulations and will forever change this part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please. You have twenty-three seconds. Twenty-three seconds.
My name is Under Threat Nation News. My name is Jackson. I live in Covington, Georgia. And what I want to say is about this development is, your property taxes are going to go up, East Newton County, and crime is going to come to your area. So, get ready. It's on the way.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sir, you have eleven seconds. Eleven seconds. Eleven seconds. Please state your name and address for the record, please. We've got to talk fast, sir.
John Clemens, a little bit down on Deep Step Road, which is right down the street from where this is at. I just want to say that I oppose this simply because you've already agreed to the Morgan County or the Morgan Farm deal. You're going to bring commercialism in right there. You want to put some more commercialism in here. And as far as that goes...
Thank you.
They're not even a half a mile apart.
Thank you, sir.
So, what's the point? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sheena, if you would, please come on up, please. I think this is in District five. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my recommendation that we deny this and accept what the planning commission recommended, that we turn this down.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards that we deny this. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we've, I'll beat this dead horse. We've got a, we've got some property down at the hub in our overlay that is exactly what this development is trying to duplicate, and not one building has been built. And they've got sewer. So, I don't, I'm not a perfec, I'm not a expert, but the demand does not appear to be there. I had a, I've got another piece of property in my district, and the developer came to me and asked me what I would support. And I told him what I would support, and he said, "I can't make any money on that." I said, "You can't make any money, or you can't make money times two." He said, "I can't make money times two." I said, "But you can make money." He said, "Oh, I can make money, good money. But I just can't make as much as I want." So, this property can be developed within the parameters of the existing neighborhoods, Deerfield, Deep Step, Newton Ridge, Ridgeway Road, all those large-type, larger-type lots. And you don't even have, we've demonstrated, you don't have to have a two-acre lot. You can have a one-acre lot, and the developer puts the other acre in green space. So, and keep in mind, this development node would also include, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Appleweight, correct me if I'm wrong, it could also include multifamily. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Apartments. Let's call them what they are. Apartments. So, I don't understand, the demand's not there. And concerning the sewer, I'm not exactly sure who's doing the talking over the City of Covington. But I had a confidential conversation two weeks ago, and that sewer is nowhere within five years of being ready for that area. So, either I was lied to, or someone else was, somebody else is being lied to. So, it's not, to bring, we've tried to keep our development nodes at the hub. We put all that effort into the hub. The Bridgestore Overlay and the Mount Pleasant Overlay, where we wanted to drive the high-density there. That was the, that was the theme. And I was part of that. So, that was the theme, is driving high-density to those development nodes, that development node, particularly in that area, two miles down the road. And the commercial and the high-density living, to include multifamily, by the way. I don't, which I don't like, but it's there. So, and now, we can't seem to get that development going, and we're going to zone, zone another piece of property for that very thing, for a demand that does not exist at this moment, without sewer, by the way. And when Judge Ellis, Judge Ellis was a friend of mine. He's quite a bit older, obviously, than I was, but his son, one of his sons and I grew up together. So, I spent a lot of time in his house. So, he called me probably three years ago. And this develop, the development he described to me three years ago resembles nothing like what's been presented here tonight. So, I don't know how that changed or when that changed, but... And he was under the impression at the time that he could jump on the Forest Main between Covington and Stanton Springs, which is not true. So, that's where we stand right now. I do not support this, and I would appreciate the other commissioners not supporting this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Mason. We have Commissioner Mason. Go ahead. I got you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for those that presented on this case on tonight. I think my only concern, of course, it has been brought up, the Morgan Farms. So, as if there is a comparison between those two properties, I think my only concern with this, not to say that we don't need the development. We are definitely in a housing crisis at this time. We do need to find ways of incorporating what we would consider as smart growth within our community. And so, we definitely want to look at smart growth from that perspective. I know that was one of the things that I've raised previously, that we want to be smart about the growth that we do. We don't want to just say yes to every single thing. My only concern with this is the sewer. My colleagues have stated that growth follows sewer. And so, I'm a firm believer that that is definitely the case, that growth follows sewer. And so, when I heard in the report from our Director of Development Services that sewer has not been confirmed at this particular time, it gave me a level of pause because growth follows sewer. And so, that's my concern. And so, I would love to honestly see, and from what I'm hearing, that sewer won't be, because that service-delivery area is now to the City of Covington, that there won't be any tap. There is no line. There is no access at all. If this board decides to continue to, or to move forward in approving sites that don't have sewer, then we'll be going back on what we stated when we say that development follows sewer. We will have people all across the eastern side of the county coming to us wanting to get it rezoned, and they don't even have sewer access. So, for me, I think that's my biggest issue with this particular site, is to ensure that we have sewer access. And from what I'm hearing, at this particular time, that's not possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
I'm going to have questions for the applicant. Before I do, I guess the applicant possibly can come up in a minute, but I'm going to have questions for them. Just want to clear up a few things. The first thing that was mentioned was the BOC needs to have a ta- The first thing that was mentioned was the BOC needs to have a town hall for District Five and One. District Five and One has commissioners. We hold town, I, I have to speak for me, I can't speak for anybody else. I hold town halls with my constituents when development comes, when warehouses comes and so forth. I, I, sometimes I table them with that developer to speak to the residents before we even move forward. So if you have not had a town hall, that doesn't fall on the entire BOC, that defaults on those people who represent those areas. That's why I said in the last meeting that we had, have you spoke to your constituents? Have you had a town hall? That falls on that commissioner. So that shouldn't be the whole BOC, because I would not intervene in District One or District Five's constituency. Now, we do vote as a whole on what's needed for the entire county, but I would not talk or intervene or go over them to speak to their constituency. Um, in regards to, I think there was mention of political favors, I don't know where that came from, that's, everybody knows that, nobody owns me. Let's put that out there. And so as we speak of growth, when it comes to growth, we have to make sure that we're doing it correctly, and that's why I had, I wanted the applicant to come up, because I know you mentioned something about the water, and sewer's gonna be there in a couple of years, and I'm hearing from Commissioner Edwards that there's a total difference. So I want to make sure that that is what, who's correct.
Suggest this, this sewer business is a smokescreen to deny our project after you just approved the Morgan Farms. And the Morgan Farms are exactly situated in the same situation we are. If you will postpone your vote for thirty days, we will come back in here with a letter that is being prepared right now by the city to clear up the question of sewer availability.
All right, my, the Morgan Farm is located in the same area, Shayna? So that means it doesn't have sewer either?
It'll be on the same sewer line.
So, so both of them don't have sewer? So we actually, so we're in the same situation. I just want to make sure, because I don't want to compare, we're, we're comparing, making sure that we get the correct information out there. So both of those subdivisions are in the same area, don't have the sewer, but can tap into those lines?
Apples to apples.
Okay. Just want to make sure I clear that up. And so is, what is the, as far as the city, what is the city stating when sewer will come into that area? What is the city saying when that sewer...
Let me say this, if you will give us thirty days, if you'll postpone the vote on this, we will come in here with the information and the evidence that you want. If you want to be fair, give us thirty days to produce evidence of sewer availability.
No, I still, I still have my discussion.
Yeah, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Guys, we are, first of all, we, we're, 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 man, thank you. Uh, guys, we're in a live board meeting. Please hold your comments to yourself, okay? Thank you. There's a motion already on the floor. If you, Commissioner, if you want to keep asking your questions, you keep asking your question. Okay?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, you were mentioning about the sewer, what did the city...
The, there have been meetings in the past two weeks subsequent to the conversations you had with city officials who were confused by the engineering report, and they're gonna clear all that up. Frank Turner, the city attorney, is preparing a letter now regarding sewer availability. And I would suggest, if you want to do the right thing, if you want to do the fair thing, if you want to treat this project like you did Morgan Farms, that you put off this vote for thirty days. What can it hurt? You can still turn it down if you're not satisfied about the availability of sewer. And I would ask that somebody make a substitute motion to give us thirty days.
So, so, Ms...
If y'all gonna ask questions, ask the questions, but making, asking people to make substitute motions, that's not appropriate. So if you want to ask a question, ask a question. If not, let's move on. Thank you.
So Shayna, we are approving the future land use map. Am I correct? This is not approving the actual structure of the building, how many homes on it, we're pu, we're approving for them to be able to move forward.
Yes, that is correct. This is just an amendment of the map, it's not an approval of the zoning at this time.
Okay. So the commissioners, if it was approved, the commissioners do have time to go back to their constituency to work with the developer to be able to decide on how they would like their area constructed, am I correct?
That can be done prior to the rezoning, if the applicant comes back for the rezoning.
Okay. So I just wanted to put that out there, we're not approving apartments or whatever it may be, we're just approving the future land use map, because that's the confusion that's going on out there. We're not approving structuring, how many apartments are, I don't want, let me quit saying apartments, how many buildings are being built. We are approving the future land use map. And just to clarify, I think, uh, one of the constituents mentioned about my statement in regards to the homes of a hundred, I tried to write down exactly what you were saying, I apologize if I misquote you. What I was meaning in regards to that is that if a house is built on a property that's cost three hundred thousand dollars in this inflation area, which is eight-point-two percent tax, that mortgage is going to be twenty-three hundred dollars a month, not including the HOA. And those figures are factual, that has been given down for me when I actually talked to the individuals at ACCG, we was talking about land use. So if somebody purchased a home, on the acreage that a lot of you may be wanting, in this day and age of inflation at eight-point-two percent sales tax, interest rate, excuse me, interest rate, that mortgage for that house that somebody used to pay for in oh-seven for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's gonna cost them twenty-three hundred dollars a month. So that's what I was trying to get everybody to understand.
Can I clear up something that you said? And that is, uh, Ed Hutter, some months ago, represented in writing to the planning department that he was not asking for any multifamily apartments, and he was not asking to build starter homes. He thinks we have enough starter homes and we'd have enough apartments, and par, apartments are off the table. They're not included in his plans.
Thank you. Thank you. So, uh, my question is, 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 I think the same one I asked, um, concerning the Morgan property, is that if the, if you did not get the letter for sewage, then it would automatically, no matter how we voted, if we, if we voted to approve, it would be that, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't happen, because you wouldn't have to sew in or to build, uh, those structures or those houses.
Neither development, neither development can be built without sewer. So if we don't get sewer, Morgan Farms doesn't get built, Stockwell Corners doesn't get built. The risk is all on the landowner and the developers to get sewer to the property. So I don't understand the board taking the position that it may be taking. And I don't understand why the board wouldn't wait thirty days to see whether or not we can demonstrate sewers available, particularly when you've got to solve this Morgan Farms problem, you know?
Yeah.
If I may discontinue for a while longer.
Um, so, there's no difference between what we did, uh, I think at the last meeting, but the Morgan property, then what we would do for this property, and I would be contingency, continued upon the sewer. The whole of, is the sewer, and I think Commissioner Edwards, he said that the city said they wouldn't. So what you're telling us is that within thirty days, if we table it, if it could be tabled, if this board wanted tabled, within thirty days, then what would, what would happen? You would come out with a letter or not, and then it would be the, we look at moving forward or not. So, um, Mr. Chairman, having said that, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table for thirty days in order for, um, this petitioner to bring us back a letter, as for a letter for the sewage.
Yes, sir. Sir, thank you, before we go any further. Thank you for so much for being here tonight. Is there a second? It's been motioned that we table this for third, um...
Chairman, if I may, it would, um, it would have to be sixty days, because we have to re-advertise.
Okay, well, sixty days, all right. Thank you.
I would like to mean it for sixty days.
All right, thank you. It's been the motion made that we, a substitute motion made, that we table this for sixty days, and second by, um, Commissioner Sanders. All in favor? Hey, 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 listen, listen, guys, guys, wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait a minute, sir. Wait a minute, sir.
We have orders, Chairman.
All in favor? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. It reverts back to the original motion. Now I'm calling for the vote. I'm calling for the vote. All in favor tonight? Any opposed? Thank you. Three, two. Next, Ms. Applewhite. The motion, the motion denied, for, the motion... Yeah. The request was denied, so anybody who don't understand, the request was denied tonight. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms., well, hold on, hold on. Guys, if you're leaving, we're gonna ask if you please leave quietly, we are still in a public meeting. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Fazio. There you go.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, our next petition this evening is a conditional use permit. It is CUP twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero. The proposed use is for auto sales for antique or classic cars. Location is thirty-five Chumisa Road. Parcel size is two acres. Tax ID would be zero-zero-two-four-two-six-one. The future land use is a development node, and the existing zoning is M-one light industrial almond overlay tier two. This is in the Yellow River Watershed, located in Commission District Three. Current owner of the property is William Dale and Melanie B. Etheridge, and our petitioner is John Kale Waddleton. An applicant's intent is to establish an auto sales business for antique or classic cars in the almond overlay tier two, and we have the details of the subject site, it was under two acres, located in the Chumisa Industrial Park off of the access road. It's also in direct vicinity to other commercial and industrial businesses. And just a brief history, this business actually came before the board, um, in March of this year, they were located at nine inch Chumisa Park in the same industrial park, but because he is relocated to a larger site, it's literally just across the road within the same industrial park, and that's why we're here tonight. And just based on the site plan analysis, um, proposing to use Suite Thirty-five for the auto sales center. All cars will be parked indoors, and should a petition be approved, the applicant must obtain all required permits and licenses from the department. And in conclusion, should this petition meet the standards of Division four-five-zero of the two thousand and nine Newton County zoning ordinance, it may be appropriate at this location. Staff recommends that should the board approve the conditional use request, that the approval be with the recommended conditions listed below. So should a petition be recommended for approval by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for an auto sales shop for antique cars, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. So the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards and regulations. One, submit a site plan of the location and obtain any required permits. Two, obtain and maintain a business license. Three, all activities for the auto sale shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building. And four, no outside storage allowed on the property and no merchandise allowed to be displayed outside the building. This is the location, aerial view, we have the, um, this is the current location, the thirty-five Chumisa, before he was across the road here, I believe. We have the current zoning, M-one light industrial. It is in the almond overlay tier two, Yellow River Watershed. Future land use map is a development node. It is located in Commissioner District Three. This is our survey of the property. This is the building that he will be located in, and these are just pictures that were taken by staff. And these were submitted by the applicant, is an example of some of the cars that he would be selling. And if there are any questions, if not, it's public hearing, Chairman.
Thank you. We allow ten minutes for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, if you would, please come at this time, you have ten minutes to, um, state your case tonight.
Hi, my name's Kale Waddleton. I'm a classic car dealer. Uh, originally came when, to move into nine inch Chumisa Road in March, but thankfully we've grown. That building right there only holds about five cars, and that's extremely tight. Within my first two months, I was already, you know, pushing for room, and a good friend of mine owns an automotive performance shop right up the street, Mr. Dale, and he's retiring first of the year, so, in this lot bigger building, you know, ready to go. But like I said, all my cars are stored inside, ninety percent of my business is internet-based, ship out. Very rarely do I have anybody come physically buy a car, but there won't be any junkers or cars I gotta restore. Everything's pretty much done, but I may have to change alternators or, you know, stuff like that, but not a full-blown mechanic shop. Everything I have, I own, and so, but that's pretty much about it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. State your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone that would like to oppose? Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Uh, Ms. Applewhite. I think this is in District Three.
I would like to move to approve agenda item, zoning agenda item, CUP two-three-zero-zero-zero-one-zero.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, the motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five, oh, thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next item this evening is the rezoning petitions, REZ twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-one-six, located at four-twenty-two Macedonia Road. It is gonna be just to rezon two acres out of a total of sixteen-point-four acres. The tax ID of the parent parcel is zero-one-zero-five dash zero-three-five-D. The existing land use map is rural residential, existing zoning is agricultural. The proposed zoning is agricultural residential. It is in the Bear Creek Watershed in Commissioner District One. Current owner is Melvin Howard Vaughn, the Melvin Howard Vaughn Estate, and our petitioner today is April Danley. An applicant's intent is to rezon the two acres of the sixteen acres approximately from A to AR, and we have the specs on the site, they are on the subject site. And for the site plan analysis, uh, the two acres are currently undeveloped, is part of the parent parcel of the sixteen-point-four acres, and again, they are going to subdivide out the two acres. And development in the area does reflect the land use, and it is consistent with the applicant's request. And in conclusion, the proposed residential use is consistent with the policies and intent of the low-density rural residential car to area, and with approved zonings in the area. Given the land use and zoning designations of the surrounding properties, there is justification for approval of the proposed agricultural residential zoning. Recommended conditions, should this petition be recommended for approval by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a rezoning to AR, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, submit a minor plat subdividing the two acres from the parent parcel of zero-one-zero-five dash zero-three-five-D. B, obtain a variance for the flag lot created on the remaining parcel, again, which is the zero-one-zero-five dash zero-three-five-D, which will be about fourteen acres after the subdivision, prior to any construction or development for that remaining parent parcel. And C, submit appropriate plans or plats to be reviewed and approved by the Development Services Department, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, the Water Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Commission, and G dot as applicable. This is the location of the parcel, this is the parent parcel, the sixteen-point-four acres, and they're looking to subdivide out at the head of the road where you see the star. Current zoning is... Current zoning is agricultural, which puts it at a ten acre minimum, which is why they would need to rezonate the two acres to subdivide out that. So we have the future land use map. Bear Creek Reservoir, uh, that's the watershed. Commissioner District One. This is the survey showing what is intended. So this is the two acres they're going to be doing here. The parent parcel will now have what we're going to call a flag lot remaining, and that is what they'll need a variance for when they're ready to develop this fourteen acres, because the access portion is going to be more than three hundred feet. So that was why I had that requirement in there. And of course, this is just a concept showing the proposed new two acres and the remaining parent parcel. And if there are any questions, if not, the applicant is here, Chairman.
Thank you. Um, we're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening. I'm April Danley. I'm currently residing at three ninety-four Macedonia Road. My grandparents worked really hard to buy this land. There's a total of seventy-plus acres out there. And in order for us, they wanted us to be able to keep our family together. So my sister and brother-in-law are there, my uncle, my father, and they're getting older. So, um, it's, uh, it's time for me. I'm getting older and I would like to put my roots down. And with the stipulations of being on the main road due to no fire hydrants, um, this is the only way we could really do anything and meet those regulations currently. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. And I think this is in District One. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's time. I'd like to make a motion to approve rezoning request, REZ two-three dash zero 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 one six.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Thank you. I think that's going to do it tonight for rezoning. We're going to revert back to our regular agenda. And I think we are up with the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Distinguished board members and citizens, I come before you today with the county manager's report. As you all know, people, purpose, and processes, we're going to start this discussion talking about people and talking about our future. I'm going to give you all a youth commission update. November fourteenth, we had the distinct honor to welcome District Ninety-three House Representative Dorine Carter and District One-fourteen Representative Tim Fleming to participate in our youth commission meeting. Uh, both representatives have local government experience, so it was only fitting for them to participate in this module where it is local government in relationship with state government. And what was really unique about what they shared with our young bright stars was that working together works in bipartisan fashion. And the two of them work on a lot of projects together and have established a strong partnership. Also, what was really beneficial for our youth is the fact that, uh, Representative Carter served as city council in Lithonia and Representative Fleming served as a commissioner right here in Newton County. So they understand, stand the concerns of local government. These young people are definitely our future. What we were particularly impressed with was how they have already started the engagement initiatives in rest, in relationship to their capstone projects. There are two capstone projects that the three groups will work on. One will be future opportunities for investments in which two groups selected. And one group selected teens and mental health for their topic. They were charged with creating a survey relative to those topics and sharing those surveys with their peers, uh, in their high schools. What I was particularly pleased with was that they really went out in terms of engagement efforts. Uh, Group One had seventy-eight responses. Group Two had a hundred and forty responses. And Group Three had eighty-nine responses. So on average, those groups were averaging a hundred and two responses. So they're getting relative information that's going to be beneficial in relationship to their capstone project and the recommendations that they're going to make to this county. Let's talk about our purpose, optimum service delivery. One of the hot button topics when we talk about optimum service delivery is infrastructure. And I want to talk about some of the fine accomplishments and reference to our infrastructure, uh, teams. As you all know, we have seventeen departments of workforce units, seven hundred and forty-three full-time staff. Eighty-seven percent of those staff reside here in Newton County. So they have a vested interest, not only in infrastructure, but the success of this county. Let's talk about development services first. Uh, Ms. Shayna Applewhite and her team worked diligently. Uh, this is a snapshot, a three-month snapshot, I might add, of the permits issued and processed, the licensing, uh, component that's issued and the renewals associated with it, uh, zoning applications and planning. When you look at the three-month snapshot and the application process piece, on average, they're averaging a hundred and forty applications, uh, processed. When you look at the permits issued, they're averaging a hundred and thirty-six issued. And when you look at the revenue collected when it comes to the permit component, we're looking at just under two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. When you look at the licensing component, on average, we're looking at right under twenty-eight, uh, license issued. When you look at the license renewals, we're looking at a hundred and fifty-one. And when you look at the revenue collected in association with the license renewals and things of that nature, we're looking at about thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars. When you look at the zoning process, uh, we're processing about thirteen applications a month. When you look at the revenue collected, that's about one thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars a month. When you look at our planning component, that's about seven point three applications processed. And we're looking at about seventeen thousand dollars in revenue, uh, on average, when you talk about the planning component. So in total, when you look at the revenue collected, we're just under three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Fleet services. Uh, Mr. Matt Childress does a tremendous job with a boutique outfit that does big and bold things. When you look at service hours, when you take this three-month snapshot, we're averaging about three hundred and ninety-six hours, uh, of serviceable hours per month. When you drill down and look at that per employee, that's about nine and a half hours a day that they're putting in. When you look at vehicles serviced when it comes to fleet, we're averaging about a hundred and ninety-seventh, excuse me, a hundred and ninety-six vehicles and equipment serviced on a monthly basis. And again, when we talk about fleet maintenance, we're looking at over five hundred vehicles and pieces of equipment that this unit oversees, and they do a tremendous job. Public Works. A snapshot of the work that's been done in October in terms of the work reports. District One, a hundred and twenty-six work, uh, orders. District Two, sixty-five. District Three, one oh seven. District Four, seventy-six. District Five, ninety-one. In total, that's four hundred and sixty-five work orders. On average, that's ninety-three work orders per district. And Mr. Chris Malcolm is doing that with a staff of forty-seven full and part-time staff members. In addition to the litter component of that, the cleanup crews pick up one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight, eighty-one bags of trash. And they've taken about eighteen point two tons of trash to the landfill, which is a great segue to the next slide. Solid Waste. Mr. Matt Dolan. Uh, we just passed our, uh, semi-annual compliance inspection with the Environmental Protection Division. Uh, we are in compliance. Uh, when we had this, uh, review, it was conducted in October. And as of November, uh, we have basically been responsible for five thousand three hundred and twenty-eight hang tags. You know, uh, in reference to sales as well, well as overall being accounted for those tags. So I salute Matt and his efforts. Transportation. Chester Clay. A boutique outfit that does big and bold things. If you could look at the slides, you could see that there are eighteen projects here. Three of the projects are all-inclusive, meaning all districts are benefiting from it. Uh, for example, number one, we know that patching and road resurfacing is ongoing. Uh, also, uh, all districts will participate in our comprehensive transportation plan update as well as our county-wide road safety plan update. But when you break down the projects by district, they are as follows. District One has six projects. District Two has eight projects. District Three has twelve projects. District Four has eight projects. District Five has five projects. So every district is being accounted for in terms of the betterment of their infrastructure. Mr. James Brown, the leader of our Director of Water Resources, he does a tremendous job. He receives accolades at the state level, he and his team. Uh, in reference to process tests performed for plant performance, they're averaging just under eleven thousand tests per month. When we talk about bacterial sampling and testing performed for water customers, uh, routine tests per month are at a hundred and fifty-eight, uh, tin well and special samples per month. They're also doing triennial lead and copper sampling, which is very important because we don't want lead in our drinking water. And he and his tech team are constantly meeting, uh, to talk about the expansion of the gallons of water per day, uh, that is consumed in reference to this county. Again, here's some additional information in reference to the work that they do. When we talk about plant checks, there's eight hundred and eighty-two plant chemical feed checks per month, ninety-seven filter backwashes in September, a hundred and sixty-five in October, and approximately one twenty, uh, in the month of November. And if anybody knows anything about the backwash, it's just simply, uh, reversing and increasing the accumulated debris and particles to make sure when we flush, no more particles and no more debris is coming up. So that's the simplest way to put it. When we talk about water production, uh, in the month of September, nearly four hundred and thirty-three million gallons. When we talk about it in October, we're looking at nearly four hundred and twenty-nine million gallons. And in November, four hundred and nineteen million gallons. Another great avenue for our citizens and residents to, uh, make sure that their infrastructure needs are met is through notified news. It's an app that's on our website. Uh, what's really unique about this app, not only can the residents request, uh, pothole repairs and things of that nature, they can also monitor the progress. Uh, on this slide, you'll see the QR code, uh, and it is on our website as well for all residents. Transitioning to some of the processes associated, there's been a lot of discussion about the ARPA funds and things of that nature. And I appreciate everyone's concerns. I appreciate, uh, the, the residents who came up earlier to talk about, you know, their frustrations in relationship to this process. So, uh, in reference to Iparametrics, let's talk a little bit about that. It predates me, but this story starts back in March of twenty, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, when the Salvation Army, uh, was designated to provide distribution of ARPA funds for the county, uh, in reference to homeowner and rental, rental assistance. Uh, at that time, approximately seven hundred thousand in aid was supposed to be dispersed. Unfortunately, in September of twenty twenty-two, we found out that there was, uh, some inadequacies, to say the least, in reference to Salvation Army and a caseworker misappropriating funds in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. That's about eleven percent of that seven hundred thousand dollars. So ultimately, there was a partnership established with Iparametrics to distribute the aid and other programming. And since, uh, this, uh, collaboration, this has been ongoing in reference to the partnership with Iparametrics. Now, the billable hours is just like a law firm when it comes to this consultant firm, right? So billable hours are charged in a, in a facet of ways. Uh, when we talk about, uh, caseworker hours, virtual meetings, administrative tasks associated with program implementation, software design and maintenance, addressing email concerns and consulting services. Hence, that's where you have, uh, the total amount as of November sixteenth being eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, just under eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that has been, uh, dispersed to ARPA as a result of, uh, their consulting efforts with us. Uh, they've also assisted us with a fire service grant as well as a Parks and Rec grant, uh, for the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. So again, there have been ebbs and flows, highs and lows. Uh, we can accept that. Uh, but this process has been fluid and for the most part, successful. Let's talk about senior home repairs. Again, highs and lows, ebbs and flows, we've talked about it. There's eight hundred and fifty-four applications right now that are under review. And quite frankly, twenty-five million dollars should have been allocated to this program. But only five million was allocated. And I am grateful that this board allocated that five million dollars because we're trying to do the best that we can in terms of the allocation, in terms of equity and being judicious in our efforts. Okay? The average repair payout right now is seventeen thousand four hundred and two dollars. And at this pace, we're going to help anywhere from two hundred to eighty to three hundred low-income household seniors will be assisted. The operative word there is help. We're still helping families. And I think that should be the cornerstone to any of the discussion in relationship to our efforts. Let's look at how we're helping from a district component. Many times, I think the previous meeting, I talked about the area median income, right? And the fifty percent threshold in terms of the median income. A quick, uh, review of that. If the area median income is sixty-five thousand and we have a senior who is only having an annual income of thirty-one thousand, where that senior, that senior's family is below that fifty percent threshold, right? Uh, so when we look at these disbursements by district, it's a very interesting, uh, data format, but it's accurate and it's trending in the right direction. For example, District One, a hundred and eighty applications. In terms of those applications under the fifty percent threshold, ninety-four of them are. So out of the one eighty, fifty-two percent of the applications are under the AMI code. Thirty-five have been approved. Uh, five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars have been awarded to District One in terms of funding there. When we talk about District Two, a hundred and fourteen applications, fifty-two of them are under the AMI threshold. Forty-six percent of those applications are under the threshold. In total, twenty-two have been approved. Over three hundred and forty-two thousand has been awarded to, uh, seniors in District Two. When we look at District Three, one hundred applications processed thus far, forty-one of them have been under the fifty percent threshold. Forty-one percent of them are, applications are under that threshold. Twenty have been approved. Nearly three hundred and ten thousand, uh, dollars have been awarded to, uh, District Four, uh, Three, excuse me. When you look at District Four, two hundred and eighty applications received, a hundred and forty-eight applications, uh, that are un, are below the fifty percent threshold. And fifty-three percent of those applications in total are under the threshold. Forty-seven have been approved. Thirty-two percent of them have been approved. And just under eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And just under eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars have been awarded to District Four. When you look at District Five, a hundred and eighty applications, a hundred and two of them are below the fifty percent AMI threshold. Fifty-seven percent of those applications are under the AMI threshold. Thirty-two have been approved. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars have been awarded to District Five. So again, when we look at, we had eight hundred and fifty-four applicants. District Four receiving the highest number of applicants at two hundred and eighty. And receiving the most money thus far awarded, we're trending in the right direction because approximately fifty-five percent of all applicants were noted as below the fifty percent AMI threshold. And based on those numbers, again, going back to the five million dollar allotment that we had, those seniors that are at the eighty percent threshold and eighty percent of sixty-five thousand is fifty-two thousand dollars roughly, right? They may not be funded. And I'm just being honest and I wanna deal in what is real, right? We're looking at it from an equity standpoint and what's most judicious in our efforts to do the right thing. The reason why it's trending in the right direction, when you look at District Four, it may be small in geographic, but it has the largest qualified census tracts. A few months back, we talked about that consultant was here. Four and two were leading the way when it came to qualified census tracts. And as a result, uh, eight, nearly eight hundred and fifty thousand has been awarded to, uh, the District Four seniors. And following up, uh, in second and third, District Five, uh, with five hundred and seventy-six thousand, and District One with six hundred and thirty-six thousand. Now, with those eight hundred and fifty-four applications still being processed, those numbers may change, but they won't change to the point where District Four will not be leading the way because again, we're doing it based on the fifty percent threshold. And District Four is leading the way with the qualified census tract. Also, there's been discussions about our community centers and whether or not, uh, we own certain properties, so on and so forth. I wanna thank the citizen who reached out to me in reference to that, uh, as I share. And I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner Sanders. And as I shared with, uh, Commissioner Sanders and the board, we're looking into that process right now diligently. And there's gonna be some standardization in reference to that. Uh, and we look to report on that probably the second meeting of January. So, uh, thank you for your concerns. And re- in relationship to Nelson Heights, another hot button topic. Uh, we are also in discussion right now with various entities who are interested in providing programming at Nelson Heights. In addition to the programming, I shared with the residents there during our September Town Hall meeting that we wanted a community advisory board. We wanted this to be an inclusive process. And as a result of that, we also have citizens who have reached out and expressed their interest in being a part of the community advisory board. Let me tell you what that community advisory board is going to be for the Nelson Heights Green Acres community. They're going to be a advisory board in which whichever entity is afforded an opportunity to provide services there, they're gonna partner with that advisory board. And that advisory board will have a stake in discussing what's needed in that community because they live in that community. So we're trying to be all-inclusive with our efforts in relationship to Nelson Heights. When we talk about programming, there's two key components, right? There's core programming elements and core programming structure. Let's talk about the program elements. The five oh one C three is a must. There must be a level of governance, right? Responsive system of operation. You have to have a board of directors. You have to have the ability to offer administration. And what I mean by that, a systematic process or activity of running a business in an organization. And the programming must be comprehensive. It must be measurable in the activities with a particular long-term aim to assist and cultivate the gifts and talents of our youth, i.e. a robust curriculum. When we talk about the programming structure, the components that we're asking for, it's programming to improve the community. Multicultural bridge building foundation, and that's key. Leadership development initiatives, personal and interpersonal life skills development, and critical thinking and programs of, of, and problem solving, excuse me. Why are these things important? They're important because again, our youth is the future, right? And we wanna cultivate their personal gifts and talents. Here's a success story. Uh, I had an opportunity to run a program, MGC Academic and Athletic Program. I created that program in two thousand and five. And here's a picture of a young lady, Mrs. Maria Jackson. Uh, there are several pictures here. You can see her in her cheerleader outfit. And you can see her, uh, with her cattle, and you can see her reviewing farm plans. And you can also see her, uh, looking at the trunk circumference of a tree, right? Well, Amaria had a fixation while she was an outstanding cheerleader and track athlete. She always had a fixation and she was a Miss Green Thumb, if you will, right? She loved the grass, the flowers, the trees, the insects, so on and so forth. So what we did, again, because it was academics before athletics, right? We tapped into her talents and we afforded her an opportunity to go and visit farms, uh, such as the Homestead Farm. Uh, and she went there and we realized, okay, this young lady who's in an urban community, who does not have a lot of the support needed to succeed, has the ability to be great in agriculture. And as a result of that, she was an honor roll student. She is currently a senior at Southern University and majoring in Agriculture, Science, and Economics. She has an internship right now with the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And she is also, uh, going on to pursue her master's in which the universe, in which the, uh, Department of Agriculture will pay for. And once she concludes with that, she'll have a job with the Department of Agriculture. So again, cultivating the gifts of the young people is paramount with the programming component. Uh, uh, another, another success story, uh, is a young man by the name of Eugene Smith, commonly known as Gino Smith. He too participated in the program. And as you could see here, there's a picture of him with his football team and a young head coach by the name of Harold Cooper after winning twenty-seven consecutive games with the young man. Shameless plug. Uh, and there are other pictures with him, uh, a picture with him getting ready to throw a touchdown here at the University of West Virginia. And then there's a picture of him at the bottom in his Sea Otter Seahawks uniform, being recognized as the NFL Comeback Player of the Year in two thousand and twenty-two after he's in his eleventh year now in the NFL. But what I'm particularly pleased about when it comes to Gino is not all the touchdowns he's throwing. If he chose after high school not to throw another pass, Gino is a gifted artist. As you could see here, he's on a Promethean board showing that he's a scholarly practitioner, but then there's a drawing there. He's a draft drawer and he's also an artist, a painter. So as many scholarships as he had in football, he had just as many to go to some of the finest art schools in the nation. And again, putting academics before athletics was the, the cornerstone of what we're discussing here. And again, I want you all to know that I'm in tune with what's needed when it comes to programming because I did it before and I lived it. Since I'm on the topic of reflections, I wa- I wanna reflect a little bit, uh, about a young man who grew up in a home, uh, it was really a, what we call a duplex, right? It was fourteen hundred square feet. And if you look at the front of this home and then you look on the side, you'll see a window with an air conditioning unit hanging out of it. Well, that's one residency. It's fourteen hundred square feet and it was a multifamily duplex, right? Fifty-five fifty Northwest Twelfth Avenue, Miami, Florida, but it's commonly known as Liberty City, Florida, right? So myself and five other people lived in the front, okay? And my mother was a domestic, my father was a laborer. And he, excuse me, my mother had to drop out of school in the ninth grade to help her mother take care of her nine brothers and sisters when her father tragically, uh, died, okay? So while she may not be in academia, one of the things I will profess today is she's one of the smartest people I ever met because she had a bachelor's in common sense, a master's in respect, and a PhD in integrity. And she instilled that in my sisters and I, okay? And as a result of that, she understood that while her and my father didn't have the means, but if she can get us in program, we could benefit from that. And that's why the Carroll City Optimist Club and other clubs that I was a part of nurtured and cultivated my talents and gifts, right? Because it takes a village to raise a child. So I say that to say, you can be from the undeserved communities, but you can make it. You know, and anybody can go, can matriculate from the ghetto to the Gitmo if they're diligent and they're consistent in their efforts. So why am I saying this? It's because I've been in this role now for six months and three weeks. And working together works. And Commissioner Henderson said it so eloquently, uh, at our November second meeting. And he said it rather simplistically, when he said, "We need to work together." And I agree. Let's do it. In fact, let's be like the Nike monit- moniker and just do it, right? So how do we do that? We do it by not looking through our rearview mirror, right? There's a reason why the windshield is bigger than the rearview mirror because you're supposed to leave things behind on your journey and on your road to success. So here's what I'm gonna ask everybody in this room, not just the elected officials, yours truly, uh, the residents here. Let's leave certain things behind. Let's leave mendacious propaganda behind, the distortion of the truth. Because when we distort the truth, we're telling a lie. Let's leave the manipulation of circumstances for personal gains behind, right? Let's leave the manipulation of circumstances for personal gains behind. Because when we use residents as props in a game, then we're doing a disservice to the community. Let's refrain from inaccurate assertions, right? You know, because when we have a jaundice view, uh, to perpetuate a narrative, then we're again doing the citizens a disservice. So I want us to spend less time looking through the rearview mirror and let's look through the windshield in two thousand and twenty-four, right? Let's hit the reset button. Let's recalibrate and most importantly, understand the focus and why we're here. And that's to serve the people. Uh, in closing, I wanna again extend, uh, my condolences again, uh, Commissioner Henderson. I know on the very first day when it happened, I reached out to you, so I wanna extend that again. And also, I want this, uh, board and the residents, uh, to pray for my predecessor's predecessor. Uh, as I understand that Mr. Lloyd Kirk had some tragedy in his family. Uh, this concludes my county manager's report. Mr. Chairman, I yield back my time.
Yes, sir. Um, Commissioner Henderson. Thank you. And, and I appreciate you calling me upon the, um, death of my granddaughter, who was, she was just, uh, three months. And I tell you what I, what I said at the, um, at a viewing and at the chapel of Lackey Funeral Home. I said that I thank God for the three months that he allowed me to be with an angel. And then after three months, he showed what an angel really looked like. And it looked like a little child, hadn't said a word, hadn't walked, uh, just cried a little bit. And then he called her home. Now, getting to this, to the business, it's just a couple of questions I, I want to ask. I had asked for a list of all the Arthur Fund, this one referring to. I had a, asked for a list of the people who actually receive Arthur Fund. And I think if Patrick, I think I asked Patrick, could you, could you, uh, could you give me the names and the addresses? Because I wanted to, uh, see or be able to talk to some of the people who were there because out of all the complaints that I get, and they do get me, they do call me, they do come over my house and talk to me about, you know, maybe why they wouldn't get this. And, and I called, I called to the county and, you know, hopefully get some answers for them. And so I wanted a list so I could see some of the people personally, personally about that. And I liked the story about you were telling us about, you know, where you, how you were born and your family. But I just wanna, not too long, wanna talk a little bit about J.C. Henderson. J.C. Henderson, I was born over in Hinger Street. My grandmother moved over, over to Southwest Street. And as a adolescent child in grade school, I had to run up to here by, through Miss Helen Norton's house, up over the hill to Wash Street School. And it's a part that you don't see, it's the old school where we, um, we received a secondhand books and tore out pages and we had to kind of learn on that. But I had to go, I went to school in Miss English and then they tried to do the best they could. My grandmother, she couldn't read that well because though it was a time. So my neighbor, Jane Henderson, no relation that I know of, uh, would help me. Uh, it was my work so I could learn. So I learned at an e- early age, if you were small, that they would bully you if you got to the school. And for many years, I ran down the hill fast and I ran up the hill. But I had to go to school because I know that Henryetta Ross, my grandma, would put something on this old boy behind. And I would rather go to school and face those guys. And then, uh, for my grandmother to get a hold of me. Because my grandma would beat me with a breast broom. She didn't lie. You had to go to church. And then during the summer, I had to go to my, my father's mother's house in the summer, Jane Lee Henderson's house. Had to go there to give my gr- my grandmother here in town a break because she needed a break from children, we know what children do. But they learned me to go to church and they learned me not to steal, they learned me not to tell lies. And I took that with me as I get, and that really never did get in any trouble until I came aboard the commissioners. I learned there was a whole pack of lies people would tell on you. They would tell you a whole lot of stuff about you, said bad things and said you were stealing and talk about your kids and stuff and with no, really no proof, but it was, it was all right, though. I still said, "I'm putting Jesus first and I don't worry about what they're saying about me." But I'm gonna say this, now, Nelson Heights, which you talked about a little bit, a little, a little bit of a concern, Nancy, you were talking about the concern that you did. I'm talking about here in Covington, New York County. Eric Stokes, who's one of the little guys who, who went to the school, uh, who I think play now for the Green Bay Packers as a safety. He went there. Um, well, uh, his name ranking, I think, uh, Recreation, uh, could tell you, he, he more folks. They went there and went to school and became successful. And not only did my son was successful, Jaquan Henderson, too, as well, who's graduated from Georgia Tech, played football, uh, coached, uh, coaching there. But there was a lot of kids doing a lot of good things. What's said to me, not the fact that I may not be there, it's the fact the place is vacant. Uh, leaves all over the ground, nobody going in, the gates are locked. Now, we can say what we wanna say and say all what we doing, but nobody's doing nothing here. I can see here, I can't see- I can see here, I can't see the Detroit or Atlanta, I can see Covington, I can see nothing going on. Our children's math skills, I think all over in Newton County, it's a low grade level. Their reading is even less than that. And all it would take is some books and somebody taking out time to read them, but we cut that. And you say, "Well, we're going to find somebody." Well, I don't think that you could find nobody to do what we doing over there at school and took all that criticism that they throw towards us. Everything they said about me was a lie and the truth wasn't in them. That's how, that's how I was raised, to tell you, to tell the truth. Everything they said about my son, you know, said that he was, had a felony or something. That was a lie. All that stuff dismissed. We just never said nothing, we just went on and talked about it. Oh, he was rishing up folks out of district, all the big paper. Paper need to write the truth for a change and stop lying on folks. Stop sending moles to go in there and run back with some of the commissioners and tell lies. You said that when you came, "I'm going to fix this." Well, you know, we're looking for a fix, my friend.
And you know what? Hold me accountable. I love you. Hold me accountable, okay?
In closing, my baby.
I love you.
Point of order.
In closing, I made since I have the floor, in closing.
Let's walk together.
Let's stop, let us stop picking and choosing people whose houses we want to fix. Because I know a few, I'm not calling names, but you can ask me afterward and I can tell you and print you over to them. I know a few who they didn't fix houses, who live just in the community. And that's why I wanted the list, because I wanted to see. I want to do what's right because that's what God wants us to do and that's what I'm going to do. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
I'm going to try to make this quick and I apologize to those who were in the audience. Thank you, county manager, for your detailed report. Just wanted to clear up some stuff because as Commissioner Henderson stated, we as the board get the frustration. We get the residents complaining and we have to relate that back to the county, county manager. Unfortunately, and this is just not coming from the commissioners, this is coming from the residents, they're stating nobody's answering them. Nobody's returning their calls. This doesn't come from us. This comes from the residents. They've come up here and they stated that. I had one, I was at church on Sunday, I was invited to a church in their event. I had residents, seniors, as a local official, and you know, you can't go into the grocery store without people providing information. And I'm honored, I'm happy to do that. I'm honored. I took this position and I took on the role and responsibility. But after church, I had a swamp of seniors come up to me about their gripes and frustration about this program. And that's not how it's supposed to be. We should not be frustrating our seniors at this day and age and they're saying they're not getting calls back. That should not be happening. We didn't, when, when the board of commissioners, when I was thinking about our, when the board of commissioners came together to agree on what we're going to put in place, we were, I know I was excited, I can't speak for all my colleagues, but I was excited that Newton was finally providing something for our residents, that they were able to see the light at the end of the tunnel, especially during the pandemic. But I did not expect all of these issues and gripes, especially for a company we paying eight hundred thousand dollars to. I did not expect all of that to occur. So these, this information is coming from the residents. Our residents are smart enough, intelligent enough to speak their minds. We don't have to manipulate nobody to say, a lot of them been doing this before I even came on the board. So I get accused for certain residents saying certain things, they've been doing it before I even came on the board. This is my first term, they've been doing this way before I got here. So, and the other thing is, the residents are stating, one resident informed me that they're, they receive all of their assistance, well, not assistance, the product actually, hot water heater was placed in their home. And the individuals that put, the contractor that put the hot water heater in their home informed us that Newton County stopped all checks and these individuals are waiting on their payment. So I don't know the validity of it, but the resident, the contractor called the resident and the, and the contract is waiting on his money from Newton County. That's not the first time I've heard that, that we don't have a standard operating procedure, SOP, for those who've been in corporate, we know what that is. We don't have a procedure put in place on how we going to pay the contractor. Then we had individuals who stated that they had contractors and mysteriously, the contractors fell off the list. So now they're back at square one. It was so many problems with this program and I did not expect to get from a company or even the county, people that are put in place, because the names changed or who's doing whatever, eight hundred thousand dollars. There has to be some accountability and responsibility of what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item eight. Mr. County Attorney, thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to stand up to disincentivize myself from going too long because my legs will get tired. So as you're aware, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the Board of Tax Assessors. I want to start by sort of at the beginning and just tell you what the duties of the Board of Tax Assessors are. The Board of Tax Assessors exists for the purpose of identifying and assessing the value of all taxable property, real and personal, within Newton County. And they also exist for the purpose of creating and submitting to the state of Georgia on an annual basis, the tax digest. And the tax digest sets forth the total value of all of that real and personal property within the county that is subject to taxation. The qualifications to serve on the Board of Tax Assessors are set by state law and it's relatively minimal. You are required to be twenty-one years of age or older. You have to be a high school graduate or recipient of a GED. You have to live within the county within at least six months of being appointed. And you have to complete on an annual basis mandatory education requirements. Actually, not annual, you have to complete your initial training within, I think, six months from your appointment. And then every two years, you complete forty hours worth of training. There are six members of the Board of Tax Assessors in Newton County, Georgia. State law provides that you must have between three and six. Newton County has six. And they serve six-year terms. The main reason for my presentation is to discuss the appointment process. And before I talk to you about the appointment process, I want to tell you how it's been done. For at least twenty years, as Commissioner Sanders said earlier, for at least twenty years, Newton County has treated the appointment of board, of members of the Board of Tax Assessors on a district basis. And what I mean by that is there has always been a member appointed by, appointed from District One, from District Two, from District Three, District Four, and District Five. And those members have been appointed primarily, if not exclusively, upon the nomination by the district commissioner and the placement on a consent agenda and approval by the board. And my firm was requested through my partner, Aaron, from the Board of Tax Assessors to review that process and advise the board whether that was the process that the state law and local ordinance has called for. Georgia law provides very little guidance about how appointment process is done, but it is very clear in one regard. Georgia law provides that members of the board are to be appointed by the county governing authority. It takes a majority vote of this board to appoint any member to the Board of Assessors and that is a function of state law. There is a provision in the county code that provides that the Board of Assessors is appointed at large, which means across the board of the county, not by individual districts, by the chairperson, subject to approval by the Board of Commissioners. So if that provision is applicable, then essentially the chairman nominates people and this board votes for who should or shouldn't serve on the board. Neither of those procedures for the appointment of members of Board of Assessors call for or require individual district appointments. Now, I'm not saying that it is illegal to do that. I'm not saying that. I'm not suggesting to you that it is illegal for the Board of Commissioners to sort of agree among itself that we're going to, we're going to defer appointments to one another and we're going to, we're going to appoint the person that you choose, or you choose, or you choose. What I'm saying to you is that's not what the law says you have to do. How you get from nominating a member, or after a member is nominated, what the law requires is that that member be approved by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. How you nominate members is really up to you. How you decide what the nomination process is, who makes the nomination, how you decide among various applicants, that is entirely up to the board. What I want you to understand is, while for the past twenty years, it has been done on a per-district basis, there's no legal requirement that it continue on that basis. If that's what the board chooses to do, then so be it. If the board chooses to do it otherwise, then so be it. It's, it's up to, entirely up to the board. Something you might want to consider, if the per-district, if the individual district appointments are not satisfactory going forward, something you might want to consider is just opening a nominating period. Allow anybody, any of you, any member of the Board of Commissioners, to nominate someone, place all of those nominations on an agenda and come in and vote on them one at a time. That way, everybody has an opportunity to nominate. If you choose among yourselves, for instance, if it's, if it's, an opening comes up and the board chooses among itself to allow District Two to make the nomination, there's nothing that would prevent you from not making a nomination. There would be one nomination, the board would vote it up or down. There's nothing to prevent you from deciding among yourselves that everyone wants to make a nomination and you want to vote them up or down as they go. And I, I think the reason that's important is unlike every other board that's appointed, not every other board member that's appointed, but the majority of the board members that are appointed, especially the boards you create, are intended at the outset to kind of walk in lockstep with you. Your planning and zoning member, your zoning advisory board member, your, you know, pick the advisory board, they are intended by their very creation to serve you as an individual commissioner, to help assert your agenda, to help inform you of what's going on below, below you, among those, among those other boards. That's not the case with the Board of Tax Assessors. In fact, the term of the member of the Board of Tax Assessors is six years, yours is four. The Board of Tax Assessors stagger in a way that doesn't correspond with the way you stagger. And that's by design. And the reason it exists that way is because of the role of those appointed members. Those appointed members make the decision, subject of course to appeal, how much everybody's property is assessed for the purpose of paying taxes. It is intended and it is created to create some separation between you, the elected officials, and the appointed members of the Board of Commissioners. I would suggest to you that the reason that there is that separation is because you are directly answerable to the public, you get voted in and out of office. And there is tremendous incentive, obviously, I'm not saying any of you do this, but there's tremendous incentive to keep assessed values low in order to keep taxes low. And that's the reason I think the Board of Assessors is, is kind of separate and apart from the Board of Commissioners, both in terms, both in appointment processes, and frankly in duties. Their only duty is to assess taxes. That's all the Board of Tax Assessors do. Your role in the tax process, obviously, is setting the millage rate. That, that duty rests with you, it rests completely with you. So that's the, that's the information I wanted to make sure you all knew. I want to be able to say that you are making whatever decision you make, fully knowledgeable of what the relevant law is, that you are proceeding, you know, if we, if we look at the windshield and the rearview mirror, obviously, the rearview mirror is there for twenty years. Every member currently serving on the Board of Tax Assessors, including two that were approved in October of last year, were appointed by this per-district process. It is a, is a procedure that is not necessary, it's not called for under the law. But if that's what y'all choose to do, you can choose to do that. And if you choose to do it another way, you can choose to do it another way, too. Again, my recommendation is consider, consider some process where there is a period of open nominations, the board makes nominations, they're all placed on an agenda and you vote on them. And as long as they satisfy those minimum requirements, and that's the reason I mentioned those minimum requirements, you know, there's no requirement that you confirm unless you want to. I mean, obviously, you can certainly inquire into people's educational, professional backgrounds, but the only requirements is over the age of twenty-four, high school graduate or the equivalent, live in Newton County, and then they have to commit to complete the training. I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have and address any concerns you have.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to clarify, on the website, Newton County website, and the residents can go and look up the Tax Assessor Board, the Board of Assessors, there are five members, one for each district. There's District One, Mr. Marvin Manor, Mr. Burnham Bell is District Two, Mr. Charles Berry is District Three, Johnny Blackshear is District Four, Kevin E. Mitchum is District Five, and Victoria Hardy, who was our assistant, I think a deputy tax assessor, I believe that's her title, forgive me if I got your title incorrect, she's the secretary. So there are five members on that board. So as you mentioned, I was given documents from, since nineteen eighty. They've been doing this since nineteen eighty. And as Patrick stated, as you mentioned, twenty years, but it's been over twenty years it has been done this way. And so my question would be to you, Patrick, why now, and may or may not know the answer, but I, I just want to put it on record, why now in twenty twenty-three, when it's time for District Three to appoint, make their appointment, that there's an issue when we just recently, a year, year ago, appoint a tax assessor to the board?
Yeah, first of all, you may be right, I may have misspoken about six and five. The answer to your question, and we talked about it last week, I don't know. I was asked to perform the task I'm performing. I was asked to ensure that this board is aware of the law surrounding the appointment of the board members to the tax assessor's office. As we discussed, I wasn't aware at the time, and probably still couldn't name the members of the Board of Tax Assessors. I wasn't aware at the time how many were up for reappointment, that someone else in my office handles that. And it's not something, you're right, it's not something that normally comes to me. But the request was made of me to ensure that this board understood what the law called for, how that process was contemplated under Georgia law. And that's, that's the only reason I'm sitting up here in front of you today.
I want to put on record, in twenty twenty-one, I was informed about my tax assessor appointment. And I was informed by residents that our tax assessor appointment didn't live in a district. Unfortunately, at this time, it has nothing to do with Commissioner Edwards' district because he appointed his own. We have two people that represent District One currently on that district. It has nothing to do with the commissioner in District One, the person that sat in his seat before me appointed that individual. And so in twenty twenty-one, I conversed with our county attorney, actually two county attorneys from the law firm, two county attorneys. And so one of the things that was stated to me, I said, "Well, my tax person doesn't stay in my district, so what can I do at the particular moment?" And so I was informed, she said, "Well, call him to see if he will resign. And since you're a new commissioner, see if he allow you to do so." But this is what I was stating, and it was our, our county attorney, Megan Martin. She said, "Just an FYI, that I'm sitting down with this now to figure out how we can get your choice in, as a member. I plan on asking the member to step down, but my understanding is Mr. Berry can be a bit difficult. I take a run at it, never hurts, right?" And that came from our county attorney. Then I received the call from another county attorney, well, one of our attorneys from the law firm, Mr. Vaughn, who said, "Commissioner, I understand that you do, would like to have someone representing your district, that you know what's going on." He said, "You will have to wait because they've been doing it on the consent agenda in the six terms. You have to wait until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three." I did that. So now we're here. I've been asked for a whole year. Now I understand why people have been asking me who my tax assessor board persons, because once I submitted it, I think Monday before last, got calls and Patrick had to get involved. Now they want attorneys to say we've been doing it wrong. And the Board of Commissioners has been doing this for decades, almost three decades, the same way. So it should not even be a question at this moment, even with me sitting on this board right now, I voted with the consent agenda of those members being on the tax assessor board for each district making their own appointment. So it does look like the perception thereof, that there is an issue and there's a problem. And Mr. Berry was appointed by Commissioner Danny Stone in nineteen ninety-nine. And I constitute different years of what I was doing in ninety-nine. I was in my senior year in college at Grand State University. In two thousand and five, he was appointed again by the same commissioner. In two thousand and eleven, he was appointed by Commissioner Esther Fleming. And then my predecessor reappointed him under consent agenda the same way in two thousand and seventeen. And that I stated, I don't know who Mr. Berry is personally. When he came up to me at a meeting that was at the FFA camp, he came up to me and said, "I want to stay on the board." Honestly, I had no idea who Mr. Berry was until they mentioned he was one of the sponsors. And one of my board members was with me, I said, "Oh, that's Mr. Berry." So this is not a personal issue because I don't know him personally. Never had a conversation with him besides him saying he wanted to stay on the board. And then I was asked to give him a call to see if he would resign, although that conversation wasn't pleasant because he- although that conversation wasn't pleasant, because he already had preconceived notions that I was calling. He was already informed I was calling. So this has been happening over the years. So the question is, why are we changing it in 2023? Our board, I'm sorry, I hear, I hear somebody talking. Our board member was appointed in 2020, a board member was called by our clerk to confirm to be here at this meeting today, that they will be appointed by Commissioner Sanders as the next person to represent District Three. I thank you, Mr. Berry, for serving 24 years, but is that fair for a resident on our resident board not to be able to serve on this board? And this Board of Commissioners has been doing the same thing for over 20-some years, but now we get to 2023, when it's time to reappoint someone for District Three. That's the problem.
Thank you, I just, I just had a question. Patrick, doing, County Attorney Patrick, doing your, I guess, presentation, you said that somebody asked you to bring this up, and I just asked for information purposes, and since that's public, who asked you to bring this up?
Yeah, as I mentioned, it was my law partner, Aaron Meyer, who had the one, he is the attorney in my office that handles tax assessor items. So he and I had a conversation that, I think we were at lunch, and he said, hey, listen, I need your help with something, he told me what it was. I said, I'll do it. So it came, it came from Aaron Meyer now. I have not asked Aaron, you know, what was the behind-the-scenes conversation? I did not ask him that. It wasn't relevant to my presentation to you today for my purposes.
Yes, and I almost, I'd be quick, Mr. C., I think it's, I think it's very important to know who asked that question, because as long as I've been on the board, and I may be, I'm the old man, I guess, and I am the old man, on this board, and it had always been done that way. Now, I'm gonna say this, as far as Mr. Berry, I like Mr. Berry, he's a good person, but I cannot go against the district commissioner as far as who she may want to represent her district. Lastly, it's only been two times that something similar to this has been done. A solid waste committee, they changed it and said that it had to be everybody vote for my representative. For about, I think, 15 years, I haven't had a person on a solid waste committee, and then Commissioner Sanders. Thank you.
What's your recommendation, sir?
Yeah, my recommendation is, is, Mr. Chairman, open up nominations, and perhaps just ask for nominations by, you know, a week before the next meeting, or maybe a meeting after that, and put them all on the agenda, let the board vote on them. That would be my, if, if you want to abandon the district-by-district procedure, if you want to go with a different way, just do that, put them, put them up there, let, let board members vote. Ultimately, whoever makes the nomination, ultimately, three hands have to go up to appoint that individual. So, you know, there's, there's nothing I can do about who, how people vote. And so in my mind, the best way to get an affirmative vote and put a, put a human being on those boards is to have more than one nominee and let the board vote up or down.
Okay, and do we do, do we need a motion to, we don't need a motion to do that?
I don't think you need a motion, you just, you, you control the agenda, you have the ability to put, put what goes on the agenda, you could just ask for nominees and say you'll just put them all on the agenda and have a discussion and a vote.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, I would like to make a motion for Ms. Cynthia Butler, who was stated in the beginning as the appointment for District Three to represent on this board as tax assessor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's not on the agenda, no?
It, it's, I, I think you can interpret her motion to be a motion to amend the agenda and to approve it, and I think you can just do it all at once.
Hey, let's, let's, vote it up or vote it down, vote it up or vote it down. I'm calling for the vote, this is what you act for. All in favor? Any opposed?
For the order, Mr. Chairman, this is against the parliamentary procedures. This is completely against parliamentary procedures. This was already done at the very beginning of the meeting to amend this agenda, that motion failed. We cannot come to an actual agenda item that is for a discussion to cause it to be adopted or to have a vote on it. We just cannot do that, that's against parliamentary procedures. So I'm calling for the order right now, we cannot do this, that is against parliamentary.
Actually, Mr. Edward, Commissioner Edwards asked for it to be placed on the agenda, and he was told that we were going to do it now.
Let's do this, let's, let's clean up any question. Let's make a motion to amend the agenda, to add that question. If that question, if that motion passes, then make that question the motion. That would be the appropriate way to do it. It's okay to vote on something more than once in a meeting.
You can amend the agenda within the agenda.
So make, yeah, make that, make, if, my recommendation would be make a motion to amend the agenda.
And I wish we would have complied with Commissioner Edwards in the beginning.
Guys, are we gonna, listen.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
It's a motion on the floor. It's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? If we, if we stop talking so much and listen, that's the problem, won't nobody listen.
Point of order.
No, I'm, I'm, this is the point right here, won't nobody listen?
No, you're not making.
It's a motion and a second, to amend the agenda, to add Ms. Cynthia Butler as the District Three representative. All in favor? Okay? All opposed? Okay, all opposed, Commissioner, you got the hand up? It failed three to zero, okay. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna receive names, just like the county attorney said, we're gonna receive names, we'll put, we'll give a name, and that's how we'll proceed forward. And we'll vote on it at the next board meeting.
I, I want to make sure that this, and we already know this is on record, this is actually being recorded, how discriminatory this looks. It looks very discriminatory. And I just want the board to recognize what they just did. Because each board member from District One, Two, Three, no, One, Two, Four, and Five, had their appointments and put them under the consent agenda, and it was approved without any discussion or any conversation. So I just want you to be aware of what just happened here, how discriminatory it looks, and be prepared for the lawsuit.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Guys, yeah, next is consent agenda. I ask that we remove item 9I, 9I from the consent agenda and make it 23B. 9I, make it 23B. 9I, make it 23B. I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Took, to, to approve the consent agenda stated, thank you. Any opposed? Any opposed? Well, we're gonna have to give a reason, a legal reason tonight.
I can definitely give a.
We gotta give a legal reason.
I can definitely give a reason, I abstain because of basically how this was done. Commissioner Edwards asked in the beginning, Commissioner Edwards asked in the beginning, was there going to be discussion and vote, we could roll back the tape like a reality show. And he asked that discussion in the beginning, to place this on the agenda. He was told that we were going to do that in the conversation discussion with our county attorney. So I abstain because it's confusing, particular moment, and how we actually conducted this.
Commissioner Henderson, are you abstaining too?
Yes, yes, yes so.
Okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The reason why I'm abstaining, because it, for years, it had been did differently. And I thank for the county attorney for us to pay him to come up and give us a reason that it didn't want to stated by the Board of Commissioners or the county manager. And just somebody anonymous that whether, you know, another lawyer who has nothing to do with Newton County tell me they had to bring this up tonight, I just don't believe it. I've been around it a little bit, I didn't believe it at all. And so I think in all, in fairness, I think it should have been clearly, it should have been clearly stated, so, well, J.C. Henderson, Detective K., said that he asked me to bring it up, and that's why I'm bringing it up, and that's why, you know, I'm getting paid for what I'm doing.
Thank you. Three, two. Ms. Hamm, please, ma'am.
Yes, sir, discussion and consideration, we're at item number 10 for Senior Services. Our presenters are Ms. Frida Reed, Director of Senior Services, along with Mr. Jeff Prime, Project Manager, requesting approval to move forward to build the Senior Enrichment Center on property owned by Newton County located at 6244 Highway 212.
Good evening. Earlier this year, we had to do a process of analyzing certain properties on behalf of the new SPOS 23 project, the Senior Services Enrichment Center. We determined a piece of property, we tried to come to terms with that property, but we weren't unable to do that. So we have now, coming back to you, there were two other potential candidate sites that we analyzed. One was located at 6244 Highway 212, and the other one was 6169 Highway 212. We worked with our design building to analyze both of those, and after looking at them, we realized that the constructability analysis determined that it would be about 25% additional cost to build on the 6169 highway. So we are recommending tonight that we move forward with the candidate two, 6244 Highway 212, which is Denny Dobbs Park.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. I'm asking again, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Senior Service requesting approval to move forward to build the Senior Enrichment Center on property owned by Newton County located at 6244 Highway 212.
Is there a second? It's motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan.
Ms. Frida, you okay with this location?
I'm fine with that location, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to make sure, Ms. Frida, the residents of the Senior Services, will it be accessible, because I know you mentioned that in that District Four, District Three corridor area, that's where the majority of the fluctuation of seniors are coming from? So what is going to be provided for them to get to that, that area? I just want to make sure.
Well, we'll have transportation, our shuttle buses, to get to that area. You know, the first one failed, but we do need a center, additional center for our seniors, because as you talked about, the population of Newton County, our foundation, which is our seniors, they're growing. For some reason or another, we've become Florida for everybody that wants to retire. So we're growing, and even though we just put an addition to the building that we have now, we outgrew that building the day we opened the doors. So we need a, a cent, a center that will accommodate the same thing this center does on Turner Lake Road in, in the part of the county that's heavily populated, and it now being Denny Dobbs, and we would have the transportation to get them there.
Thank you. All in favor? It passes, five oh. Thank you, I'm so glad y'all are finally getting y'all a new home, thank you.
Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, thank you, thank you much, thank you so much. Ms. Hamm.
Mr. Chair, we have two items for Finance, number 11, and number 12. The first one is Finance, the October 2023 Financial Update. Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director, and following will be Finance with Water Resources, requesting approval of the Georgia Fund One Resolution, Resolution Number R120523. That'll also be presented by our Director, Ms. Brittany White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How you doing tonight?
Tonight I will be presenting the October 2023 Financials. October is the fourth month of our fiscal year, so that puts us roughly about 33% through the year. I'll start with the General Fund revenues. To date, we have brought in 13.8 in revenues. So this is a graph per month, so October has been our largest month, because in October, our tax revenues generally start flowing in. The graph below shows the actuals to budget. Our General Fund expenditures, so to date, we have, the current month, we, we spent 6.2 million. To date, we've spent 26.6 million. So that puts us at 28.89%, so we're trending just a little under that 33%. And this graph shows the per-month expenditures, and then below that shows the actuals to budget. So at this point in the year, we have brought in 21.5 million in actuals in revenue, 26.6 in expenditures, so that puts us at 5.1 in our revenues under our expenditures, but that's pretty typical this time of year, because most of our revenues have not been flowing in. We have three enterprise funds. The first one is the Water Fund, their revenue actual to date is 3.4 million, their expenses to date are 2.1 million. Our Solid Waste Fund, their revenues to date are 3.3 million, and their expenses to date are 2 million. And our Gaithers and Factory Shoals Fund, their revenue to date is 69,000, and their expenses to date are 96,000. We currently have three active SPOS. 2011 SPOS has one, one remaining project, the Historic Jail, and that one, I believe, has recently been voted on to start. So that one, once that project's done, we will wrap up the 2011 SPOS. So remaining there is 1,027,000. Our 2017 SPOS, the collections have wrapped on that, wrapped up on that, but we still do currently have 35.5 million remaining to spend in that SPOS. The 2023 SPOS is our new SPOS, we've been collecting on that just for four months at this point. Right now, the 2023 SPOS looks like it's negative, but reminder that we do have bonded, bonded projects, so that's the reason for that negative. So our 2023 collections to date, we've collected so far, as of the October report, three months. We did average 1.5 million in our estimates, so we've been collecting slightly over that. So at this point, our collections to date are 5.4, our projections were 4.5. So at this point, we've brought in 944,000 over what we estimated. And I did not change the heading on that, but this is Impact Fee Fund, and we currently have 4.5 million in there. Any questions?
Brittany, do you happen to have a breakdown of the impact fees per district?
No, we don't track per district, at least in the expenditure side. I'm not sure if Planning and Zoning tracks the revenues per district, I'd have to get Maschino on that.
Okay, so I would need to contact Planning and Zoning?
That would be for the revenues, I can tell you from the expenditure side, though, we do not track per district.
And what was the total amount that we collected for impact fees again, I apologize?
Um, the actual impact fee budget currently is 4.5, so that's what we're holding like in our checking account.
You said that's the budget, is that the amount that was actually collected?
Yes, well, I mean, we've collected more over the years, but that's currently what we are holding in the checking account.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a Georgia Fund One Resolution, and this is a resolution to open a new Georgia Fund One account. The Georgia Fund One is the local government investment pool. So this account will be open to invest the water funds, cash reserves, because in the Georgia Fund One account, your interest yields are pretty, pretty similar to what a CD would be, but your money is liquid, so if you need that money, it's available to you the next day. So this is just a resolution to be able to invest their funds into the local investment pool.
Thank you, can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason, and second, I think, by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes, five oh. Thank you, Brittany. Ms. Hamm.
Mr. Chair, the next two items we have on the agenda, excuse me, the next item we have is item number 13 for Recreation and Purchasing, requesting approval for Sports Field Incorporated Contract Facility Pond and Turner Lake Softball Complex Turf Renovations. We do have Mr. Jeff Prime, our Project Manager, along with Ms. We do have Mr. Jeff Prime, our Project Manager, along with Mr. Dwayne Mask, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Earlier this year, we issued a request for proposal for design-build services to renovate the turf systems at the City Pond Park and Turner Lake Softball Complex. We received a proposal from Sports Fields, Inc. We've reviewed it, vetted it, and tonight we are recommending that you accept that and award a contract in amount of one hundred and one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars.
Is there a motion tonight? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
I don't know if Jeff can answer this question. Are we still in an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Covington in regards to parks and recreation? Do they have to weigh in on any of this? Because City Pond is considered city property.
No.
No. We still have the lease agreement for the property.
So no intergovernmental agreement?
Well, we have a lease agreement for the property, right.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, myself personally, and not all the time, but sometime I go up to the park, you know, just to kind of talk and around, and it's needed of some repairs, make it look a little better, as more as being representative to the Newton County. And I hope that not only, and hopefully we see in the past, we go to the recreation, the playgrounds and stuff throughout Newton County, especially ones in town that are in disrepair, and that we look at redoing those too, as so that we can have all our parks for our kids looking good.
Commissioner Sanders.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. I forgot to ask this question. This is from the SPOSS twenty-twenty-three. When will we be hearing about the remaining projects from SPOSS two thousand and seventeen?
So I do a monthly report, so I'll work with the county manager to make sure we get that out to you guys.
So will there be a presentation before the board? And the reason why I'm asking that question, because I get asked on a daily basis.
Okay.
So I don't have information to provide when we don't receive updates on what's happened with projects that the residents voted on in two thousand and seventeen, that they're looking forward to see completed, and we're in two thousand and twenty-three. And we're now working on two thousand and twenty-three projects, and we have not finished two thousand and seventeen.
That's something that the county manager would bring forward.
That's why I was asking him that, Mr. Chair, because we don't get updates. So I was, since we had the project manager here, and we are public in a public meeting, I was able to get the questions answered for those residents who've been asking constant, consistent questions.
Mr. Sanders will provide you an update.
Thank you.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Also, Mr. Chair, number fourteen is coming from Facilities with Mr. Jeff Prime. This is for a presentation of rehabilitation options for the RL Cousins Community Center.
Yes, sir. So earlier this year, when we initiated this particular project, we were requested to do an assessment and to look at options that would look at both the possibility of either renovating or renovating and doing new construction at this property. Working with our design builders, Sunbelt, we have worked with interviewing each of the tenants, CASA Partnership, and the Juvenile Justice, and the Board of Elections, who will be moving out there. And we've also done a property assessment, looking at the existing buildings, ascertaining information from Facilities, Jason Johnson and his team, to look at the facility itself. So with the report that you have tonight is the outcome of that effort. So if you look on the page two, this is the existing campus. You have the historic buildings, the government annex, band building, Withering Field, and the Withering Gym. Next page. So the first part of the analysis was determining the buildings that contribute to the historic features of the campus. What you have here is the old education admin wing, which is on the front. You have the kitchen and old cafeteria and stage and the library. The library is where CASA is today. Those are the contributing historic buildings that make up the campus itself. Next slide. So we looked at three options. Option one was to look at the possibility of just renovating the existing space. We know that one of the things that this site struggles with is enough parking and parking that has ADA accessibility to get into the facility. So this particular site plan and cost includes adding forty-eight new parking spaces on the front adjacent to the historic education wing. We would also be doing some work on the existing parking back behind Withering Gym, and then also looking at numerous different site improvements for water, sewer, and other kind of improvements. Then from that, we go into page five. So this is how the building program could fit on this piece of property. The red is the old cafeteria, and that's where CASA is today. They have recently done some renovations in that side of the facility, so there's very limited amount of work that we'd need to do there. In the front, you have the family connections that it would be fully renovated. Juvenile Justice, we've met with them. Recently, they received funds from the state, and they did some renovations in their space. They're very happy where they are. So there would be some minor work that we would do on the exterior of their space. Then looking at the other end, the dark blue, that would be the Board of Elections. The front portion would be their offices. The segment in the wing B would be for where they would store the election machines that you see there. Now we get into the community center. Working with the Alumni Association and the others, we ascertained the program that we wanted to have go in this particular facility. It included a room that would house up to three hundred people, a multipurpose meeting space, activity rooms, offices, conference space, kitchen, and a place where you could actually serve food as well. This also will work as a possibility for doing senior services activities over there as well. What you see here, and the pros and cons, you have this option, is obviously you're saving and you're working within the existing space. We get into the wing B and wing C, those were, one, they're not historic, two, they are old classrooms, and the structural walls limit what you can do as far as reconfiguring them, and they have short ceiling heights. So we carved out a space that you can see on the end of wing C for a meeting space, but you could only get about a hundred and eighty people in there. We do have the cafeteria and stage area where we can get about a hundred and fifty, but you don't have a space where you can get up to three hundred. And then, of course, you're also limited to the size and the other activity spaces that are there. Okay? Page six. This is option two. So in option two, we maintain the historic education wing and admin wing on the front. We add a new storage location for the, that's adjacent to that space for elections, and then we tear down completely the rest of the buildings, which would include the cafeteria, kitchen, library, and the two wings, and we build a new facility. Also, you get a new parking that's off of Carlton Way, where we'd have parking that would be adjacent to the front entrance into the actual new community center. Some pros that go along with this is you have a new community center that has an opportunity to be built in a more modern way. We can build the spaces exactly the way we want them to be, meaning we can design the spaces for three hundred people in the meeting center and so forth. Some of the cons that go along with this is, one, we're taking down some contributing buildings to the historic character of the campus, and next, this is the most expensive. This is about twenty-five percent above our budget. Look on the next page. You can see the building program. The front historic education wing stays the same with the exception of the storage for the election machines, and then everything else is built into new facilities. So understanding that we had limitations with option one, as far as the spaces that you had to work with with the existing building, and then the fact that option two had a negative effect on historic campus features, and it was over our budget, we wanted to go with a hybrid option. So if you look at the page eight, this is the hybrid option. So in this case, we are maintaining all of the historic elements of the campus, which is the education wing, the cafeteria and kitchen, and the library where CASA is. But we're building, we're tearing down the classroom wings of B and C, and we're building a new community center, a smaller one, but meeting the intent that you have there. We're still adding the new parking spaces on Carlton. We have dedicated spaces for the staff for Board of Elections, and of course, the forty-eight parking spaces up on the front. Page nine. So this is what that space would look like. The front education wing stays the same as mentioned, but now we have a community center that allows us to afford both sides. We can still use the kitchen and the cafeteria for activities specifically for serving food and those kind of activities, but now we have a community center that allows us to build in a modern way. We also allow us to keep CASA and their current spaces. This particular option is within our budget and something that we like very much. So after looking at each of these three options and looking at the pros and cons, our recommendation to you, the Board of Commissioners, is to authorize us to move forward with this particular option, which is option three.
Option that the Alumni Association is recommending as well?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So the Alumni Association is recommending which option?
You said option.
Option three.
Option, option three?
This option right here.
This option right here, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right. I seek a motion so we can get some discussion on the floor. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna open up a discussion in just a second here. If I can get a motion to get on the floor. Think this in your district, Commissioner Cowan. Option three, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Well, thank you for allowing me. Well, I basically, you know, I looked at it, and Jeff, I think you hit the nail right on the head, man. I think, and this is something that I think that we could have, we could, we all can agree on, agree upon, because I think one of the concerns I had was with one of those plans, it was about close to nineteen million dollars. And I thought that was just too much. I think you should, you should, when you spend your money, you should spend within your budget. And sometimes, if I was building a house, I may not get my bedroom as big as I would want it, so I had to downsize a little bit and kind of make it. I think this kind of works for the Alumni Association and as far as the people in the community. One of the things that we had mentioned, and Runny, you correct me if I'm wrong, when we walked that particular piece of property, you were saying, and you brought it to my attention, you said in the immediate front room that you would like to see a little bit bigger, nicer door. I think you said that, and you also said that.
See nicer what?
A door, you know, entrance.
Entrance.
You know, and he said that, and I agree with him one hundred percent. And secondly, you want to see maybe some pictures of Mr. Stewart or some of the faculty members, because it's partly historic, and I think it means a whole lot to the community. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna shut up so we can go ahead and vote. One of the problems that some most of the people had in around that community was the fact that Mr. Stewart was the principal, and it just felt like he didn't not get the recognition to a certain degree as he should have. And so they shared that with me, and I agreed with them, and we would like for something to be in there about the principal and the teachers who worked there and helped to educate all of us, old folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
The first question I have is the transitional plan for those who are already occupying the building like CASA, concerned because that's foster kids. Those entities that are in the building, what is the transitional plan for them once construction begins? Has the county, and I guess that would go to the county attorney, you work with the county attorney, making sure we have a location for them? Because are they going to be back in that building once it's completed, or how is that going to work?
So the good, the good, the good news about option three is CASA, just starting with CASA, stays exactly where they are, and their space really requires no, no major renovations that would require them to be moved out.
Okay.
Same thing with the Juvenile Justice. They, like I said, they just recently received some funds and did some upgrades, and they're happy with how they're set up. A lot of the work that we're going to be doing is going to be on the outside, changing out some windows, putting in new mechanical, but it'd be minimal, if anything, kind of a disruption to their services. The Family Connection is probably the only one that would require like some kind of a relocation on the campus, but we've got space that we could relocate them in temporarily in some of one of the wings that are there while we renovate that space. So one of the things that we'll do is we'll work diligently with the, with Sunbelt to come up with a plan that makes sure that nobody is affected in a negative way on the site.
Okay. And the total cost, because I know we allocated a certain amount of dollars from SPOSS, so what is the total cost of this project?
So the total budget is eight million dollars.
So it is, so the amount of money was for SPOSS is not going to go over?
Yes, ma'am. This particular option, we're able to achieve this option and stay within our budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
One last quick comment. This is a project that Commissioner Cowan and I, we worked on this together, and, and, you know, one while I was in, I don't know what district you're in, but it don't matter about the district. It's all about working for the people that you represent in the community. And I think, you know, you're not above our department. Yes, thank you.
I ain't gonna be petty. All, did we get, yeah, all in favor? It passed five oh. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Ham, Mrs. Ham.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, Human Resources and Risk Management, being presented by Ms. Pamela Maxwell and Ashley Amber Cumbry, requesting approval of the ACCG twenty-twenty-four Workers' Comp Insurance Renewal.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
The request we have before you is to seek approval of the renewal premium for our ACCG Workers' Compensation Insurance Policy. I have Ashley Amber Cumbry with ACCG here with me tonight. We are pleased to announce our experience modifier decreased from one point oh to point zero nine eight, which indicates our loss experience is slightly better than average when compared to those in the same industry. Also, we met the requirements for the ACCG Safety Discount Program, which resulted in the savings of seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. The two thousand and twenty-four premium is in the amount of two hundred ten thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars. This item was budgeted in our two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year, and this amount falls within our budgetary projection. Lastly, I'd like to thank all county employees for their continued effort to working safely, and to our supervisors for always making safety a priority. Thank you.
Hi, and good evening. I'm Ashley Amber Cumbry. I'm the Director of the Property and Casualty Programs for ACCG, and you guys have been a member of the Workers' Comp Program since two thousand and eight, and you have been an excellent member. As Pamela mentioned, your experience mod has gotten better. It's point nine eight, and the average for the large deductible members, and we have about seventeen like you guys. We have a hundred and sixty-eight members in total, but the average is like one point oh six. So you've been at a higher mod for many years, several years ago, but it's continued to improve, and it's in great, thanks to Pamela and the Safety Committee that you guys have enforced that that has improved. And they do a great job. I know they've. I know they've got defensive driver training coming in in January. We have local government risk management services, which is part of your membership in the program. So they, they assist, they support your efforts in loss control. And anything you can do on the auto side to reduce auto accidents, that is just a trend, regardless of what industry, but particularly public entity. We do have some great news in that we are giving another dividend back on your premium this year. So it's a four million dollar dividend credit to all members.
Yay.
Yay. And we also have a five million dollar cash return coming back in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. And that is in, is, is due to the investment income that the insurance companies receive when they're waiting to pay claims. The, the mechanism that we have, which is an alternative to insurance, it's more like a mutual fund for Georgia counties. So the investment returns have been great. The last year or so has been a challenge, but those investment returns have been great. And then the losses have come in less than expected. And that's the way we have to price is what we expect them to be. So that is great news as well, and you'll get a portion of that return in the first quarter of next year for all eligible members in the program. So we just appreciate your participation in the program, and I wanted to, to thank you on behalf of the Board of Trustees for the Workers' Compensation Program. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Pamela, your, your, your team does a great job, so thank you, guys. Guys, I seek a motion tonight. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by, I think, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Henderson. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Chair, we're at item number sixteen, coming from the County Manager's Office, being presented by Mr. Mike Hopkins, Director of Newton County Water and Sewerage Authority, along with our County Manager, Mr. Cooper, funding requests for water and wastewater relocations.
It states that the contracted amount requested was fourteen million dollars. That's not what he's asking for. He's asking for any contribution available.
Okay. Good evening, sir, thank.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Cooper and staff. Thank you for letting me come here tonight to talk about an important issue that we're dealing with right now. Typically, we see one to two utility relocates a year that affect our infrastructure. Right now, currently, we have this chart here showing there are twelve projects within our service area. Nine of those are active with six of them under construction. And so we're looking at fourteen point five million dollars in order to do them all. Our pipe that we put in the ground typically lasts anywhere from fifty to seventy-five years. And so we are having to abandon pipe that's only ten to fifteen years old. And so a pretty heavy hit for us here. But, you know, Salem Road is the big one here at nine point nine. That is quadrupled in the last four years, the cost. That is probably the most critical water main we have in our system that connects the four tanks on the west side of the county. So very important as we work through the re- relocations of our utilities. So tonight, you know, I come here asking for some assistance if possible to help us out with some of these challenges that we're having. We agree completely that these traffic improvements must be made. We all have to, to travel the same roads as everyone else. It's just unfortunate that it does impact our water and wastewater infrastructure here in Newton County. I've got pictures, if you want to see some of them, the Yellow River. You can see some of the, the bridge replacement, the footage of the water mains. It's not just fifty to sixty feet, it's hundreds of thousands of feet here. And the cost for some of these, the Pony Express is one of the ones that hadn't been let yet. So just looking through these. This big one here, Crowell Road and the access road here on exit eighty-eight is critical there. A lot of improvements though there. Our board voted in November to fund both this project and the Harold Dobbs project right down the road at a cost of over two point four million dollars. And so everything we do, everything we touch is very expensive here. Just looking at a lot of traffic circles that are necessary. Like I said, Salem Road is the large one here, replacing over three miles of pipe, little over a thousand feet of sewer that's impacted, just in order to get out of the way of the DOT. In order to, to operate and to put infrastructure in the DOT right away, we have to offer a no-cost letter, which means that if there's any relocations, then we have to bear that, that cost for that. Jack Neely and Kirkland Road, we finished up the water. The roundabout is not complete. We usually have to go in first to do that, but that has been completed. We've completed three other projects in the last sixteen months here at a cost of about one point seven million dollars. So with that, I'll take any questions or any thoughts.
So Mike, I wanna make, I wanna make sure that the board know these are projects that, that you don't, that you didn't have to upgrade. You have to upgrade them now because, and, and remove, and move the piping because of the projects that the county has put in for, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Tip, typically on these roundabouts, traffic circles, there's cut and fill. So you get down, we've got to have a minimum depth of cover for the pipe in order to, to retain its structural integrity. And so, you know, there are a lot of impacts there. So pretty much we abandoned in place. We cannot remove, the cost for that is too great. We've even asked the contract, could we pull it out and reuse it? It's not possible with this pipe.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna ask, Howard, you got a recommendation?
So when you talk about these projects, eleven of the twelve projects directly impact all the districts here. For example, District One, there are three projects in this water resolution plan that impacts District One, two projects in District Two, three in District Three, five in District Four, and two in District Five. So in terms of an allocation, I believe that we should and could give some funding to this because it assists us with our infrastructure. Brittany, please keep me honest. I think that we have about one point nine million or so of unallocated funding associated with AWPer. So a recommendation that I would like to make is potentially giving the Water Resource Department maybe nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of that, and then also giving another nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to our Transportation Department, Mr. Chester Clay, so that we can handle some internal DOT projects as well.
Thank you, sir. Guys, is there a motion that we can get on the floor so we can talk about this? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Open it up for Commissioner Sanders, discussion.
I just wanna get clarity, and I don't know if Brittany can provide us with that, because I remember we made, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jackie's not here. The remainder of the AWPer funds, we moved it to another project. When we voted, I think we, we talked about the senior services, because we had like two million left. You might wanna look at some minutes and go ask Ms. Jackie about those minutes. Because we were talking about removing, moving funds to the senior services.
We currently have, and Brittany, you can attest to this, correct?
No, I'm not saying that we may not have it there. I remember a vote, and that's why I say we might wanna check with Ms. Jackie to make sure that on the record that the Commissioners didn't make a vote. I'm not against the project is what I'm saying. I'm just questioning the allocation of that money, because I remember voting on something of that magnitude. Now, I stand corrected, but I do remember us making a vote.
So there was an act, I think there was an act by Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Mason at that time, but I don't think it was ever voted on.
It was in regard to the senior services project. So if we, if we can, like I said, make sure that's not in the minutes. If we can do that, I agree that we need to allocate funding to this project, but if we can make sure that we didn't do that, because I, I do recall something of that magnitude.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. Just let me say this. Is there any other fund that we, and I'll just tell you reason why. When I, when I was listening, people come to my houses, seniors about their broken pipes and, and work needed to be done in their homes, and some said they don't get all the money. Someone says that the contract is in debt. I, I think, I believe that we should take that money off the fund and put it back in the community to the people who need it, and look at another funding source. You know, I, I, I made no, nothing about it. Why can't we use some of the, what, what is it, two million? I'm asking, is it two million?
Oh, one point nine.
One point nine. Why can't we take the one point nine? I mean, I know they have, the board are getting mad about it from our fund balance and use that to do this project and take whatever remaining funds that we do have and try to go out and help as many seniors as we can with their homes, because I think that's something they wanna do. And, and, and I, as I said, I'm still on that list. And, you know, I was just surprised, nobody by eighty, eight, eight thousand went to Ms. Kennedy, you know, it's for services and for grants and, huh? I'm sorry, eight hundred thousand. And, and so, I, you know, I just want that to benefit the seniors, people in the community who we, who we know needs. People need the water pipe fixed, who still saying, they've been talking, and, and they have been fixed. People were just seeing their roof after roof falling down, and they say it's still haven't been fixed. And so hopefully, we can address some of that issue, and just find another funding source. I would like my county manager to look at that, and, and like, as I said, and I'm closing, the fund balance for that, that, that money.
Thank you. Any more discussion? There's a motion on the floor.
Subt, if we look at the one point, whatever, eight, one point two, meaning comes from the fund balance to fund that needed infrastructure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Henderson has made a substitute motion that we look at that one point nine million dollars that we're discussing right now. Any discussion? All in favor? He asked him that it come from the fund balance. He asked him, he asked him that it come from the fund balance. He asked him that it come from another source. A substitute motion is on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. So let's go back to the original, let's go back to the original motion. All in favor? This is the original motion, the one point nine to be, I think, to be split between water.
Water resources and transportation.
And County Transportation. All in favor? Yeah, 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 all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
Abstention. My abstention is based on that I'm not against the project.
Patrick.
And I'm not for it, but it's, it's based on, I'm sorry.
That's going to order, that's not legal. Patrick, please.
What, what's going, what's going on? What's going on?
That's not legal.
Yeah, no, actually, you used the point of order incorrectly, Mr. Chair. But this is based on, my abstention is based on, I'm not against the project or for it. I'm, they're the funding source. We have not even looked to see if those AWPer funds are allocated somewhere else. So that's why I was asking to make sure we look at the minutes, to make sure those funds are not allocated somewhere else, because we're making the vote based on AWPer. And what if Ms. Jackie pull up the minutes and say, y'all did vote for that, Commissioners? And so now we're gonna have to come back to do another vote and, and do it all over again. If we just did a vote like Commissioner Henderson stated, base it on, we're approving, give the funding, but we're gonna come back to make sure we have, the county manager's gonna tell us where the funding come from by utilizing another funding source. Thank you.
Thank you. That motion did pass to give it to Water Resources and to the County Transportation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number seventeen, Resolution R one two zero five two three A to amend ACCG defined benefit plan for Newton County employees from the County Manager's Office. Our presenters are Ms. Amanda Shoemaker, our HR Director, and then Ms. Mr. Trey Johnson with ACCG, as well as Ms. Brittany White, our Finance Director.
Shameless plug again, Dr. Amanda Shoemaker. Congratulations.
Dr. Amanda Shoemaker, thank you.
Hello, Commissioners.
Good evening and welcome tonight, Dr. Shoemaker.
Thank you. I am going to present to you Trey Johnson with ACCG. He's going to go over what we're requesting as, as it relates to amending our current defined benefit pension or defined benefit program with ACCG.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, everybody. I was here a, probably a few months ago. And if you remember, part of the defined benefit pension plan that was approved, one of the components was employees would have the option to purchase past service at a higher multiplier. So what was approved was a one point two five percent multiplier for all past service for the employees. And then with that, the employees would have a window of time to increase that multiplier for the past service. That window of time, what we're looking to amend, we're looking to extend that window of time to the end of, the end of January, so January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then that would allow the funds, the deadline for the funds to be received for the purchase of that past service by the end of February. So it just gives us a little bit more time to get in front of the employees and educate them whether or not they should buy back the service or not. The other part of this amendment is, it was just some language that we, Amanda and, and her team, and, and our team, we discussed. And it was an issue regarding the Tax Commissioner and the employees at the Tax Commissioner. And so we included language to include eligible employees, the Tax Commissioner and employees of the Tax Commissioner who were hired on or after July first, twenty twelve. So that's just a part of the plan that it, it prevents employees from being in both the old Tax Commissioner Retirement Plan and the current defined benefit plan with the county, and those who did not have the ability to be in the old Tax Commissioner Plan to be in the county's retirement plan. So any questions? Be happy to answer them for anybody.
Thank you, sir. Let us get a motion on the floor, okay? I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion, Commissioner Cowan?
Uh, the purchase of the, I guess we're buying back time, right? Is that with pre-tax money or is that with after-tax money? In other words, I think the county has, y'all have a defined benef, I mean, a defined contribution plan, right? That's pre-tax money. Can they roll money out of that plan into that? Okay.
Commissioner Henderson.
So how would I, I mean, information, how would the, the employee do that? Roll their money over to that?
So what we're working on now, and what Amanda's team has been great working with us on getting to us, is all the relevant information to decide how much their past service for one employee. Every employee is different regarding their age, their years, years of service, their salary. So all that is compiled, and then it gives them a number on, or a price per year of service for each level of increased multiplier. So they would be able to choose whether they want to buy back past service at a one point five, one point seven five, or two percent. And I'll, me and a few other ACCG representatives will be holding probably a week's worth of meetings to get in front of any employee who is considering it, and we'll be able to go over all their options. And each employee will have their own form where they say, I wish to elect, or I do not want to elect to buy back any past service. And they'll submit it, and then we'll process it.
And you'll be doing that for the Commissioners as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, we're at number eighteen for our, uh, county manager. Presenter, Mr. Patrick Jogstadter. Consider, excuse me, consideration and approval of contract to sell um, seven point nine five acres of land located on Industrial Parkway to Newton Investments LLC.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Um, Board, you may recall, uh, last month, you approved the execution and delivery of closing documents for the sale of property to Newton Investments on Industrial Boulevard. This property is a couple of parcels to the south of the property that the closing just occurred on. And you may also recall, we discussed this property in executive session. The, Mr. Williams proposed, or Newton Land Investments proposed to buy the property at seven point nine five acres, roughly at the corner of Industrial Boulevard and Alcovee. We own it jointly with the city of, of Covington. The proposal was to acquire that seven point nine five acres for a total purchase price of sixty-five thousand dollars per acre. The board asked us to get an appraisal. I've discussed that appraisal with you again in executive session. The appraisal came back significantly lower than the purchase price. So, the purchase price offered under this contract is more than the appraised value of the property. So, I'm bringing it to you today to either accept or reject the contract. If you approve the contract, what we will do is convey our half interest to the city of Covington and the city of Covington will conduct the sale and will receive half of the proceeds. Works to our benefit. Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion on the floor, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner, um, Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed four oh one. Thank you. Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, we have items number nineteen and twenty coming from our District Attorney's Office. Mr. Randy McGinley, the first item, number nineteen, requesting approval for Axon Justice Digital Evidence Management System. And then also number twenty would be the pay scale for attorneys with the District Attorney's Office and Public Defender's Office.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are y'all? Uh, first item, number nineteen is the, I guess, shorter, simpler one, probably. Um, this has been budgeted. I know, I think I've, every year when I come before y'all about the budget, one of the things I bring up is the concern about digital storage moving forward. Body cam, dash cam video. We have the twenty-five-year state mandated, um, record retention policy, which is just a lot. Um, we are, the amount of money we're spending on external hard drives and flash drives is becoming a, a large expense. IT has been just killing us lately with being upset that our server is almost full. Um, and one of the things we do with that is a lot of that goes to Mr. Carter's office, Public Defender's Office, um, where we share a lot of our discovery directly with the Public Defender's Office. So, we don't have to email anything. We just drag it into a separate folder on the shared drive. Um, this system will allow all of that digital stores to be done on a cloud basis. Um, and it will also make it very easy for us to serve discovery on defense attorneys, essentially to send them a link. And same thing with law enforcement, there's, for them to, uh, provide things to us, we just send them the link and they upload it directly to the cloud-based system. This is already budgeted. It was something that, as I said, I brought it to the board's attention multiple years in a row. And last year, or I guess this current fiscal year, FY twenty-four, the board approved it with the, approving essentially half of what I asked for with the idea that it starts January first. Um, and I, I could be wrong, but I think the reason why this, it, it needs approval is they're asking for, they being Axon, which the Sheriff's Office also uses too. It's evidence.com. Uh, that's what they use for their body cam and a lot of their things as well. So, that'll be very easy to work with them. But Axon asked for, they'd asked for a longer contract and we talked it down to this, which is essentially five and a half years. Um, and the concern with that, obviously, is any sort of government entity is, I, you know, me as the person seeking that, I don't get to approve my own budget. But I say all that, a, a, and this was something that is being split with Walton County, as the agenda says. Within the contract, it, it makes, and they deal with governments all the time. And so, they, um, include under the termination, um, part of the contract. It says that agency, which would be the DA's office, is obligated to pay any applicable fees under this agreement. If sufficient funds are not appropriated or otherwise legally available to pay the fees, agency may terminate this agreement. Agency will deliver notice of interm, of termination under this section as soon as reasonably practicable. The date of such termination will be the date Axon receives notice from the agency. Um, so, I think that was the concern from both Newton County and Walton County, um, that we just can't approve a five-year contract. Um, but clearly, the language is in there to terminate it if, for some reason, this board does not approve, um, that funding moving forward. We just need to send them notice. Um, but otherwise, for, and this would be to start sometime in January. I did not get on, for timing purposes, because today, I'm not, not on the Walton agenda until the first meeting in, uh, January. And so, the idea would be that this contract wouldn't actually start until after, um, Walton agrees to this. And, and they, they funded the full FY twenty-four, so more than enough is funded over in Walton. So, I don't see any issue with that. So, if there are any questions, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, guys, I seek a motion. So, we can get this on the floor, please. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Can I stay here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Welcome, welcome, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, guys.
Um, I've got a number of things, and I know this has been brought to, uh, I think, the board's attention in previous years um, as far as pay is concerned for attorneys. Um, and I know I've met with Chairman Baines and, uh, County Manager Harold Cooper a couple of months ago to discuss this. Um, and it's been an, an ongoing issue as far as, I, I think, and I'm not trying to speak for Mr. Carter to a certain extent, but, getting resumes when we have vacancies for attorneys has been an absolute struggle over the last two years. Um, and I think what I provided y'all kind of gives a background of the DA's office. I will say that this is not just a Newton County thing. This is probably a statewide issue, or it is a statewide issue. Um, there are offices across the state that are struggling. And, and what I'll say is historically, at least, and Mr. Carter's been here a lot longer than I have, but I don't mean to age you, sorry. Um, i- is we've historically had a lot of, um, people applying and we've hired straight out of law school. Um, and that is essentially just kind of dried up the last two years, um, which has been a, a, I'm sure that's a bigger issue than just pay, but some of it is an issue of pay, is that a lot of other neighboring counties, i- i- you know, their pay scales frankly went through the roof during, you know, just after COVID. Um, that's been something that is a struggle for us to compete with. Another issue that I think just needs to happen is we, we need to update our pay scale for attorneys. We've historically had one grade of attorneys, um, and both offices have grown. I mean, I know my office has nine county-paid attorneys just in Newton County. Same thing in Walton. I have some state-paid people as well. And, and I can go into a lot more detail with this and provide the county, and I guess to a certain extent, I don't, I don't know where we draw the line of getting into personnel issues and things. I don't want to do that, obviously, unless that's something that y'all need to get into and we need, we'll answer any questions, obviously. But I would just tell you from, from my office's point of view, this year, we've had vacancies the entire year. Um, and we've had four resumes come in, four. One of them we hired, but into a state slot. She, well, we're getting to pay, but she'd been an attorney for twenty-two years. So, on the state pay scale, she's kind of was, you know, it was an issue. It was not an issue for her. Um, other two were getting paid somewhere much higher than we could even compete with. Um, and the fourth one, um, I'm hopefully working on being able to hire in Walton County. Um, just where she is moving is Newton is not a viable option with where she'll be living. And that's the only resume that I've gotten. I, I'm sorry. There was a fifth resume of somebody that I frankly found out something about the person and it was not worth interviewing them. So, um, a, a, and I don't know exactly what all is provided to the board, but I can, if it's appropriate for me to pass around sort of our proposed, um, pay scale, to have a separate pay scale for the attorneys in both the DA's office and the Public Defender's Office so that they are paid the same. Um, obviously, there may be, there'll be differences, individual people based on experience and things like that. But it also will, another benefit of it will be to sort of formalize what people are paid when they are state-paid and getting supplements. Um, because that's been sort of a, I don't know how to put it, kind of, whatever the DA feels is appropriate at the time. And so, that's, if I can pass it around, I don't know if that's something that, i- i- it doesn't have everybody's specific names, obviously, but it's just a proposed pay scale. Um, and before I do that, what I'll say is I, I'm sort of to anticipate some questions. I know this is sort of singling out one position. I, I, I get that. But I doubt there's a position in the county that's, has been struggling attorneys in each of our offices. I, I will tell you is, under the current pay scale with the five percent increase, starting pay for this, for the grade of attorneys is, I think, sixty thousand and some change. To be an attorney, you have to go, do what? Yes. Um, to be an attorney, obviously, you have to go through high school. You'll have to get an undergrad and complete a four-year degree or more. You then have to take the LSAT test to get into law school. You then have to go to law school for three years. Once you, before, when you finish law school, to even take the bar exam, you have to pass the bar fitness. And that's not like the old-school presidential fitness we did in middle school. This is ethical issues. To be able to take the bar, and when you actually take the bar, I think this year's bar exam, only sixty-nine point eight percent of the people that took it passed it. And so, three out of ten people that do all of that can't even be attorneys. And, and that's just a hard thing. And when you look at it, sixty thousand dollars, kind of broke it down, I think, in what I provided to you guys. It breaks down to about a little bit over three thousand dollars to take home a month. If you got rent, car payments, student loan debts, all those sort of things, you're essentially able to maybe pocket a hundred or two hundred dollars a month. And that's not counting paying for clothes and suits and things that you have to wear. Um, a, and so, at the, I hate to say this, but unless you went to law school so that you can then live with roommates or live with your parents, I, I don't know how we're hiring, ever hiring people for sixty thousand dollars doing this job. And I can, I know y'all know this. I'm not gonna get into too much detail with it, but the job itself is not an easy job. Newton County's had fourteen murders this year. Um, that is more than numerous years before combined. Um, and the number of sex cases and things that we have to deal with. And obviously, I know Mr. Carter can go into what his folks have to deal with on a daily basis. But we just need to do something. And I, I, I know the county's talked about pay studies, but I think attorney things are things that we need to deal with right now. I'll pass around sort of our proposed, proposal.
You guys, I, I have been around for a long time. Uh, I think this is at least eighteen years that I've been your public defender. And, uh, I think Commissioner Henderson has been here the same, the whole time that I have. I love seeing everybody out. I love, like, having you in my office. I like seeing you when we're out. But I don't like coming before you, asking for something in the middle of the year. But this is a crisis situation. I actually had to liquidate one of my positions, um, in order to pay people and retain people. I don't know how I'm gonna get that back. I'll probably be coming back to you at a later time to try to get that back. But that's what I had to do to save my office. In Walton County, I spent seven weeks as the only attorney in the Walton County office. My office is run with seven to nine attorneys in each office. I was the only attorney for seven weeks in Walton County. So, um, we have got to figure something out. Um, I'm not asking you to be Fulton or DeKalb, but Fulton and DeKalb are paying people a hundred thousand dollars out of law school over and over and over again. They, they, they've added three hundred positions in the last couple of years, all paying a hundred thousand dollars out of law school. I know we can't compete without, what we have to, what we have to offer is a personal touch. We have to offer people trial experience. We have to offer them mentorship and not just a big office to go to, and that's what we do. But, um, kids these days want to be paid. So, and that's kind of where we are.
And so, I say, I, I know sort of, and I, obviously, this would, sort of, the ask would be to, to implement this and give Mr. Carter and I have some authority to place people within the pay scale. Um, obviously, with my office, I think out of the nine positions, I'd basically be looking for six of them be that grade one, four be grade two, two be grade three, and one be grade four. Now, that also includes our state-paid folks too, um, as they'd be placed in this pay scale as well. Now, you know, the, the county pays, county supplements, and just in case y'all are not aware, I mean, the county supplements for my state-paid folks range between about four thousand dollars a year to about thirty thousand dollars a year because the state pay scale frankly is even worse than the county pay scale, um, for attorneys. I think they're starting at fifty-eight for prosecutors. And, and so, that's a problem. Um, and so, I, I know my, I, I think to put people where I would expect them to, where what I think would be appropriate based on this pay scale, would be for a full fiscal year, would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase of just salary, not the increase of employment costs, which I think, from what Brittany showed me, it's probably somewhere between, somewhere around maybe five thousand dollars per person, um, because obviously, health insurance and stuff wouldn't, would not increase. And this would just be for the half of the fiscal year. So, it'd be, um, somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. That would just go to the personnel line item. And so, it could only be used for that. Mr. Carter and I, we couldn't move that money somewhere. It's not the idea is that we get this money and somehow spend it somewhere else. It'll only be on this. And if we don't spend it, then we don't spend it. And frankly, I think with both our vacancies, we probably come really close to making up for that entire amount, if not more, probably. So, that's where we're at.
All right. Thank you, sir. I think we're gonna do it a little different tonight because this, um, this item is not budgeted for, so. Um, and I know this is something that the Commissioners want to know where the money come from. So, we gotta get some, some questions on the floor.
Right.
Um, Commissioner Sanders?
You kind of took the words out of my mouth, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering where the funds gonna come from because in the beginning of the fiscal year, we set a budget based on positions. And so, many departments needed certain positions and requested certain positions, and we denied them because of our budget. So, for me, I try to be fair as possible when it comes to certain things. So, I would like to know if there are any other departments that are in need of, been, and diehard of, I guess, staff that we denied from the first, from the, doing the budget in the beginning. And so, that, that's where I stand. I just want to make sure that every department in this county is covered, or wherever it may be, because they requested employees as well, additional funding.
So, let me, you asking for employees or?
No, just funding.
Just funding.
Well, funding period, which equals.
I can't speak other departments, but what I can say is, anytime I have vacancy of any other, any other position, I'd get plenty of resumes and can fill those positions very easily. Um, and so, I can just speak for that. I can't speak for other departments. Now, again, the funding, as I said, I think, I mean, the amount of vacancies we've, the amount of vacant time we've had in these positions over even just the last six months, I, I, I've not done the exact math on that, but I bet it's probably pretty close to what we'd be asking for.
Question, was this proposed to us in the beginning when they were doing the budget?
For FY twenty-four, I, I, I sent the proposed, now, I will say is, this has been modified. It's been, uh, increased since, because some of the issues we've seen from other counties, I sent a proposed circuit-wide pay scale with my budget proposal for FY twenty-four.
So, basically, it was, it was denied from the finance?
Yes. And some of that, I think, was, more of the logistic issues of trying to do a circuit-wide pay scale is very difficult. And I've kind of abandoned that idea. I've just said, I'd, I'd like to start fresh with new pay scale just for attorneys in each county. And whatever each county does from there with COLAS and things like that, they're on their, not on their own. I don't mean that in a bad way, but they are on, because trying to do a circuit-wide thing would be.
Because I, I would love for us to pay on, on various scales. I mean, we all educated people on this board and we want to make a certain amount of money based on our education. The student loans will be paid for years. So, I would love for us to be on near DeKalb and Fulton, but unfortunately, we don't have the same property tax or the value of constituency that they have to compensate what they're paying. That's why we lose a lot of our law enforcement. We losing fire people because they have the means to pay that rate. But we don't have that here in Newton County. I'm pretty sure eventually we will, the way we're growing, but we don't have. So, that's only my concern. I would love to see the numbers of, of other departments that are in need as well because they put in their bids in the beginning of the year. So, I, I just want to be fair across the board.
The only thing I'd add to that is, one of the positions require a law degree or something, something similar to that. It's a limited pool from people to draw from to start with.
Um, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Prosecutor, so, the, the, these, these positions, particularly in the Public Defender's Office, would be Newton County only and not for the circuit, the, the.
Correct. This would be funding to raise the salaries of the Newton County-paid ADAs and the state-paid ADAs that are in Newton County. Essentially, I have nine, not counting myself. I have nine state-paid ADAs. There's four that are in Newton and four in Walton, and there's one that goes back and forth. Is they all get a county supplement, and my point would be to place them on the pay scale as close to where they are now. And so, their increase in county supplement would be something very small. I mean, I think it's a, yes, i- i- it's essentially, some of them may get like a three thousand dollar increase to their county supplement just so that they fall somewhere on the pay scale. yes, it, it's essentially, some of them may get like a three thousand dollar increase to their county supplement, just so that they fall somewhere on the pay scale. So, they're placing an actual position on that pay scale. So, yes, it would not be anything with the Walton County-paid attorneys or the state-paid attorneys that are in Walton County.
Right. So, so are they having similar issues in Walton County, on the Walton County side?
I don't, I, my office does not have the same vacancies I have, that I have in Newton. I have one vacant position in Walton, and I've gotten one resume all year. So, as far as the number of vacancies, I don't have as many in Walton as I do in Newton. I think that is reversed.
My office is the opposite. We have a lot of openings in Walton, and Newton is pretty good.
So, this is, this comes down to a matter of recruitment and retention.
And this is something, I've dealt with county managers. We've worked on it so hard for so many years, literally eighteen years, trying to keep people from going to Rockdale, to DeKalb, to Clayton, to Henry Counties. And we've done a really good job, and one of the things that, we've, we've worked on so many ways of accomplishing that. And it worked for a long time. I have no idea what the, the current crisis is. All the judges are asking me, why can't you find somebody? And it's kind of funny, as soon as they're looking for a law clerk, all of a sudden, they stop asking me these questions, because they can't find law clerks. The, the economy for attorneys is going well. There are private people, people who may have been in my office for a year who are now hiring my senior attorneys out from under me. Local attorneys who are hiring my senior attorneys out from under me. It's, I've, in eighteen years, I haven't seen anything like what we're experiencing. And that's kind of why, you know, I understand Commissioner Sanders that this is probably best to be addressed during a full budget season, to look at what everybody else needs. I totally understand what you're saying. I wouldn't be asking you this if it wasn't a crisis, if it wasn't a situation where we may not be able to competently handle our constitutional duties to represent people if we cannot retain quality attorneys. And I, you know, primarily, I wanted to bring it to your attention. I know Mr. Cooper and I have discussed this at length. He's worked with me very well on trying to handle my particular small issues. But Mr. McGinley, especially for Newton, is having major issues, and we will, everybody's gonna feel the repercussions. You know, if you want to prosecute bad guys, you're gonna have to defend them, and you're gonna have to have attorneys who can handle the cases and who can handle them well, as opposed to seeing cases slip through the rugs. You've heard about Fulton County where the DA's office shows up thirty minutes late to a hearing and a judge dismisses a murder case. You know, I don't see that happening here, but we need to have that staff. And I totally feel for all other, all the other county employees, that, that they're very important. But every other employee just about in the county, if you were to send out a posting for their job position, you would have five to ten resumes. I have had fewer than five resumes for Newton County for the entire year. That's difficult, so.
And I think what Commissioner Edwards said is, it's also about retaining our current people too, and making sure that they stay as well.
And the last part of my question was, this, the, the sheet we received is, is current and not the, not a proposal, right? This is what we, this is what you guys?
No, that's the proposal.
Okay.
No, I'll tell you, right now, I think we're, for attorneys, they're on grade twenty-four, I believe, which starts at sixty, like four hundred and fifty-eight or something like that, and goes up, I forget where, the eighties or so. Well, I'll tell you, when I started here in two thousand and eleven, the current pay for attorneys, it starts at sixty. When I started two thousand and eleven, fresh out of law school, it was fifty. So, we've gone from fifty to sixty since two thousand and eleven. When I first started in Newton County in two thousand and eleven, Fulton was paying fifty-six, fresh out of law school, it's now a hundred. And that's where I get like, I mean, and I've always said this, like, we, being here makes sense with Fulton, but we can't be like here in, in DeKalb and all those as well. I mean, that's the, and also, we can't have all the attorneys on one pay grade. There's some that are supervising and trying the bigger cases and those things too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I completely understand where you are. I think my colleagues are saying as well, is that the same concern that you all are having in your department, every other department is having that same concern. And so, I think what we wanna do as a Board of Commissioners, because that is our main job and our main responsibility, is to ensure that we have a balanced budget. So, if we have already agreed to a balanced budget, where are these additional funds gonna come from, and is that gonna put us in the red? Because which, we're overspending what we've already balanced. When you compare us to Fulton County, DeKalb County, DeKalb County has over five hundred thousand residents. Newton County has a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen thousand. So, as you can see, as the Board has stated, those counties that have five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand more residents, they're generating more revenue into their communities where they can actually afford to have those higher wages. Whereas Newton County, and I think what we have to do, Harold, is let's look at, what are the other, and we've done this so many different times, look at other counties that is similar in size to ours, to see if there's comparable. There's no way we're gonna be able to compete with DeKalb. There's no way we can compete with, compete with Gwinnett. We can't compete with Fulton. Now, we can compete with those that are a hundred and sixteen thousand in population. We can compete with those, but it's just impossible for us to be able to compete with those counties that have over five hundred thousand residents in their community, because they're generating a lot more property taxes, a lot more fees. They're generating a lot more revenue into their community. So, I think with us trying to make this decision tonight, we'll probably be putting the cart before the horse. So, I would recommend that what we do is, let's look at some of those other counties, as we have done historically in the past, to see, you know, has, how much has it increased and see what we can do, because we do wanna make sure that we retain who we have, and we wanna also be able to attract, at the same time, new talent. And so, but I also wanna make sure that we're cautious in our funding. I mean, we have to basically run the county like how we run our homes. We're not gonna say, hey, you know, I, I wanna pay you, I wanna pay this water bill, you know, it, it's five, it's five, five hundred dollars, but I really wanna pay you a thousand. You know, we're not gonna do that. We're gonna be able to pay what we can afford. We're gonna utilize what we can afford. And so, I think we wanna keep that same concept when it comes to the budgeting of the Board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I got Commissioner Cowan coming up next, but I do wanna add just a tad bit to that. So, I think we also wanna include to Harold, to see if, if, if we can even find some savings somewhere, if we, do we have savings? Because there's gonna be a lot of legwork going out, looking at other different counties. If, if, we probably wanna check and see if we can find savings as well to go along with that suggestion. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna ask the Board, it's a, it's a, we should set this as a priority, because I go to the courthouse every day and I see the volume of people that's in and out of there. I'm shocked what you're paying, really. I, I did pay scales for years, and I'm just astounded that that's what it's paying. Those jobs need to be moved up, and I think your scale is, is fine based on what you've got there. I think we need to make that a priority, though, for the budget, and that's coming up in June, June or first of July, right? So, you got, you're gonna have to deal with it for six months. But it's, it's in the county's interest to have good prosecutors and good defense counsel. I go either way, you know. Sorry, guys.
We work together fine, so it's.
But it's, it needs to be a priority.
Commissioner Henderson? Well, I won't take long, and I do agree with Commissioner Cowan and, and as far as looking to raise it, but I think in the conversation, we should also add the Office of Sheriff too as well, and if we're gonna look at it, look at it law enforcement all together. Because if you don't, you come back, in, in, in just my opinion, these weekends, well, you know, we need this too. You know, we've been talking about this too, and so if we address, or look, attempt to address it, just stress all at the same time. Commissioner Sanders?
Leave, right? I think the sheriff's office has a pay scale separate, it's a totally different table from the other employees.
I don't know if our county manager is aware what we actually use, one of our, we use Douglas County as one of our counties that we emulate, because they're around the same in budget cost. They're a little bit more in population, like at one forty-five, one fifty. But we kind of utilize them as an example. So, we definitely might need to do a wage-salary study, and I concur with my colleagues that I don't want to make a move on something where we don't even have our finance director here to even tell us what's in the budget. And we just said, look for some money somewhere. That was kind of the same thing I said when the water thorder was up there. Let's see if we can find the funding from somewhere else, the source. So, if we're gonna do that, we need to make sure we be fair around, around the Board. So, if you can probably get with our finance director to see, or look at, and then look at all the departments and see what we can do to make sure to help with all the departments, because the sheriff offices are losing deputies to other counties as well. They try, fire services, I've talked to fire services, and they're losing people as well. We know fire, police, as well as the criminal justice system are all important, encompasses law enforcement. So, we need to look at all of them in their entirety to see what's the need for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess the, the task is for Mr. Cooper to see if he can find some savings and look at some of the surrounding counties and see what's comparable.
And I guess that's, one of the things I brought up was, I think there's some, like, obviously, we're gonna have a significant amount of savings already in our budget as is, from the vacancy we've had. I mean, we've, our budget is probably, I don't know, like ninety-something percent personnel, and we've had four vacancies for six months. It's gonna be a pretty large amount already, that's.
So, you asking for the transfer from that?
And that's something, I guess, I can go back and get all that exact number from Brittany and possibly come back, and the idea of maybe transferring that. Because I, I mean, the reality is, even if we change the pay, say, pay scale changed January first, I could hire four people January first. I mean, that's just not the reality of things, so.
Good, let's go.
Yeah, so what we'll do, we'll make it a priority. We'll do a market data analysis with populous municipalities of the same like size and, and tax base. And then, we'll also look at creating what we call job classification series, you know? Maybe we create a progressive career ladder for some of your attorneys. Attorneys one, two, and three, create those type of job series. But first thing first, we gotta look at, from a financial perspective, what we have. But I think most importantly, conducting this study with, you know, counties in like size in terms of their jurisdiction and moving forward and bringing back a report. First part of the year is critical.
Sound good?
Thank you. Nice to see everyone.
Thank you as well. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Rest easy.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, it looks like we are at item number twenty-three B, approval of the twenty-twenty-four Commission meeting schedule.
Thank you, ma'am. So, guys, we always do this. We always approve the, the meetings. But there's a meeting, January second, the first meeting in January is on the second. And I don't know who all are gonna be here or not in town, but I wanna make sure before we approve that, if we need to change it, we need to change it tonight. I think last time we did the second Tuesday and the third Tuesday, back to back, if I'm not mistaken. So, if you're not gonna be in town for New Year's, we wanna go ahead and make that change. Because I know some of us got kids that are out of town, and we wanna make sure we be fair to everybody. I'm sorry. Which one? July second. So, so what we normally do, we normally change it when we get that, when we get close to the meeting. That's why we're doing it now, because it's close to the meeting.
The proposed dates, Mr. Chair, would be January ninth and January sixteenth.
All in favor? Well, we're gonna approve the whole holiday, so we're gonna make that change and approve the whole holiday schedule. I mean, the whole Board's schedule, okay? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next is the alcohol license. I seek a motion that we approve all of them. There's a ton of them. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Just wanna put on record, are these are renewals or new ones?
Yeah, these are renewals of existing licenses that have been determined to remain in compliance.
Had to do it every year. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we're, we're not aware of any violations or anybody out of compliance, correct?
They, prior to them coming to you, staff reviews to ensure they've remained in compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor? And passes five oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. There's an opportunity for our citizens to make comments. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Butler, one oh five Rodney Way, Covington, Georgia. I have a complaint how the senior program have been implemented. My major complaint at this point is vendor pay. I had Royal Flush to install a hot water heater in my home a few weeks ago. They were told by the county, the reason why they haven't been paid is because they couldn't get an inspection at my home, because they contacted me. I've never been contacted by the county for an inspection. I've called on several occasions to try to get an inspection set up, and they lied on me. They told them that they couldn't get in contact with me. When I called the county to set up an appointment, I'm told we'll get back with you. It's been several weeks. No one has gotten back with me. Now, I was at your town hall meeting when you first hired in. I voiced my complaints with Attorney Kennedy. She reassured me that things would be straightened out. They are not. And I need her telephone number to let her know that eight hundred thousand dollars we paid them, I'm not satisfied. I'm not satisfied, and a lot of seniors have been put through a lot of changes. Now, I got six contractors that I owe money to. I don't need anybody else calling my home. I was notified yesterday. They stopped payment on Royal Flush check because they didn't get an inspection at my home. So, I got on the phone today, called all the vendors that's completed the work at my home to see if they've been paid. Only one have been paid. Guess what? I never got a call, never got an inspection. So, how did he get paid? And the other ones didn't. Now, I got other people that I need to get them paid. I don't want any more calls coming to my home. I don't want any more lies coming from Newton County. I need to have it fixed. I need all of these people to call my house from Newton County, come and inspect my home. I've had three vendors that's completed the process. I've turned in the release form, said they did a great job. I'm satisfied. I need someone to come inspect their work, so these people can get their check. It's just not right. It's not right. The integrity of Newton County is going down with our vendors. Now, if we ever get another program, how many people gonna wanna work with us? Think about it. You wouldn't. So, I need you to fix it, Mr. City Manager, and I need you to call Attorney Kennedy and let her know I'm very unhappy, and I need it fixed.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? County Manager, Cooper.
Uh, first, I would like to very humbly apologize to the board and to my fellow citizens of Newton County for my outburst earlier. Uh, if I have an issue, this is addressed to Mister Chairman there. Uh, if I have an issue with the rules of conduct, I believe it is, that was adopted in two thousand sixteen, can I take that up with the clerk's office during normal business hours?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the flume that was up earlier, I did not find a notice in the newspaper for it. But I, if I'm not mistaken, this, I guess this needs to be taken up with planning and zoning. A flume does not require the newspaper notification, from what I can read, but that needs to be clarified. And also, I'm not supposed to address individual commissioners, so I'm gonna address Mister, address Mister Chairman, Mister Baines there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders has earned my respect, and I believe that I can wholeheartedly say I believe her when she says that no one has bought her. And, uh, and, uh, just for clarification on my comments during the flume change, the, uh, homes that were what Mister Vincent told me, the homes that were to be built in his, uh, development were about the same cost as the homes that were on three and four acres. That, so those homes that our police, fire, and teachers could not afford also. Thank y'all. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? No, you're good, sir. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Taxpayer Vol. And Commissioner Mason still owes me an apology for the lie that he told on me that I was getting paid to sit on the board. So I know I probably won't ever get that apology, but how would he feel if somebody told a lie like that on him and his wife? Why don't he talk about the money him and his wife got, since he trying to sit up here and tell a lie about I'm taking money from charity? I don't have to take no money from nobody. If I need something, I ask for it, and if you can give it, they give it. Because see, it ain't nobody that's sitting in this room tonight, black or white, man or woman, that ain't never needed some help from somebody, and they say they don't, they're a liar. And so, Commissioner Mason, you need to grow up, be a man, and stop being a flunky for everybody, because them ain't the one for you to play with, okay? Because see, I'm somebody's mother. I'm somebody's wife. I got grandchildren. I got children, okay? And I'm somebody's sister and somebody's daughter. So don't you ever do that to me again. So just grow up and be a man and stop being a flunky. Thank you. You have a Merry Christmas too, okay?
Anyone else? Anyone, man, don't say that. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Fred Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two. Uh, King's birthday coming up in January. Normally try to do cemeteries on that day. Uh, if you know of any cemeteries need to be taken care of, let me know, because, uh, I'm gonna just go ahead and pick one myself, you know? But anyway, we will be asking volunteers, you know, for that, uh, on King's birthday. And about this, um, home improvement for senior citizens, uh, I've had work done on my, my home and, uh, I hear a lot of people, some of the, a lot of the, the seniors, they saying they having problems, just like the young lady said, you know? And I know they having problems, but, you know, when, when I was asked for something, I went ahead and got what they asked for. And I think that's the biggest problem, you know, they're not, 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 not doing what, what they're asked to do. Uh, but good program. I just hope everybody can get, get some relief from it. Thanks much.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, my name is Faye Salmon, six six eight Kirkland Road. I'm here to complain about this roundabout that started at Kirkland and Jack Neely, and everything has stopped. It has cost me a lot of money. Excuse me. I lost clients. The, the, the driveways are dug up. I spoke to Mister Edwards. Thank you, Mister Edwards, for taking my call that early. Um, two client, two family members, the gravel hit their windshield, cracked it, and I had to pay for that. Now, last Wednesday night at eleven-thirty, someone rang the bell and said there was a water leak. They turned off the water. I had to scramble early in the morning to call the family members because they couldn't come in the center. I'm dealing with the elderly. They have to go to the bathroom every minute, so I was closed. My staff lost money. I lost money. This is so unfair, and I need to know who's going to reimburse me for that, those costs. I was, Mister Cooper, I spoke with him today, but before that I called and called and I, excuse me, couldn't get an answer. It goes to voicemail, and he didn't call me back, but I did speak to him today. The very first time I met with him, he promised that they're going to pave my, my driveway. Hopefully, that's gonna come through because it's nothing right now, and I'm really upset. This project has impacted my life. I mean, it's past my bedtime. I'm a senior citizen. I go to bed early, and this very annoying. So I'd like some explanation because Mister Cooper said it's not a county project. Well, someone hired these people to do the project, and the water line busted, and I don't know, so it's really very annoying.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Denise Williams, Newton County, Georgia. Uh, my issue is to Mister Cooper because you're the county manager. You over day-to-day operation. And a lot of the seniors have been calling us about, you know, getting their repairs done on their house, and, um, they dialed his number, um, four zero four, two nine five, zero eight seven one. The voicemail is full. They can't leave a message. So, um, multiple other seniors said you call them from number four oh four, seven two three, five zero six zero, saying this is my personal cell phone number, and don't give this number to nobody, but I'm gonna help you. Well, I hope you know the magnitude of giving your personal cell phone number out and then doing county business from your personal cell phone. If you got a county phone, you should be answering the county phone. And most of the seniors, seniors, uh, citizens that need these senior repairs, they have turned in everything. And what you need to realize, Newton County is a close-knit community. Everybody know everybody, so it's nothing that, that you're gonna do that is not gonna be repeated. So if you saying that such-and-such can't get no cabinet indoors, and then the person down the street got cabinet indoors, they live in the same community. They know each other. Most of the senior citizens, they talk to one another. So we need a standard operation on how we gonna get these seniors what they need. Because you don't answer your phone, your assistants don't answer her phone. So when they call us, we directing them back to the commissioners because we can't even get you. So it need to be a standard procedure or operation. These seniors ain't asking for much. They just want their home repaired. And then they sitting out there in the audience at night only to hear you say, a lot of people ain't gonna get theirs done. But some, the main people that not gonna get theirs done, they were the first ones that applied. So is that bad of them? And then the young lady came up here and said that she did the small business grant. You told her she turned in everything right, everything and did everything right. Well, why didn't she get any other money for the small business? How would she know to resubmit if she did everything right? How, how is, how she supposed to know to resubmit? She submitted everything. You told her she did everything right. So we got to have a standard operation procedure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, good evening once again. Uh, under, under threat nation knows, I'm on YouTube, for all citizens in Newton County, you can see my work on YouTube. First of all, I wanna talk about your monitors. They got brackets. You can hang these monitors off the wall so the people can see you. People out here, it's hard for them to see you guys up here. You got Christmas decoration. Ain't no kids coming here to see that. Put it out in the hallway. Put some resub. We don't wanna see that. The people come up here, uh, commission, they talk to you. They talk to you and tell you what's on their mind, but we can't even barely see you guys. Then I wanna talk about, uh, I spoke to you about the monitors, right? Get some brackets. Hang them up so the people can see. Christmas decoration, put them on the hallway. Then I wanna talk about the opera farm money. There should be a federal investigation on opera farm money. We don't know nothing about this money. The, uh, Mister Cooper here, he want us to put it in the back, put it on the back burner. Don't, don't worry about all that stuff. You're gonna keep on repeating the same mistakes. We've gotta be transparent and accountability for this money. The people out here are still waiting for their homes to be repaired. One or two, three or four special charities, special interest, they didn't got their houses fixed or buildings fixed or whatever. But it's a large population out here that haven't even got it, and here we are fixing road with the money, giving it to special interest. Uh, who is you giving it to? I don't know. You could come up with somebody. But anyway, uh, I just feel like you guys are not doing right by the people. Think about it. It's the taxpayers' money. You giving the money to everybody but the people. That's a shame, man. Y'all should have some kind of concern about, you know, what you doing with the taxpayer money. It's not fair to the taxpayer and the homeowners. They paying all these high sky right, skyrocketing, uh, property taxes. But you ain't doing right, Bob. You vote against this district, but you'll never vote against these districts over here. So come on, man. You guys need to work together. I don't know what's wrong with you guys. Why you got it so in for this district over here? I don't live in that district, so you ain't gotta worry about me. You ain't gotta worry about the opera farm money. I'm taking care of it. Believe that. That's why I could come up here and look you in the eye, man, and tell you guys, you guys are doing wrong by the people. The people need to come and hold you guys accountable. This place was packed at night. I ain't never seen that many people here, but you know what happened? Their agenda was so long, the people got so frustrated, they were ready to get out of here, okay? You should have put the comments ahead of all their agenda, so their people could have came up here and voiced their concern about what's going on in this county, what's going on with their tax dollars, and be held accountable for it. Mister Cooper, come on, man. I don't even know where to start with you. It just, I don't know. You wanna do what you wanna do with federal funds.
Thank you, sir. Great. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, sir.
Mister Barnes. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
First today. God, thank you. So I wanna thank the commissioners for implementing or approving the adoption of the mental health initiative. This came from ACCG. ACCG sent us this initiative in September, and I've been sending emails after emails after emails when we're gonna put this on the agenda. Because today was the last day we can adopt this mental health initiative along with all the other counties. And why ACCG want to put this in place is because they're gonna be fighting for us at the Gold Dome to get funding down to the counties to assist with mental health. So that's why I apologize for my many emails, commissioners, but that's why I was trying to get this adopted, so we can assist with our lobbyists getting funding down to our county. Also, we've had businesses, entities who are seeking information in regards to mental health. We have a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, I don't remember what we put in there, we did the budget, uh, for mental health. They've been asking. They sent emails. They sent their information, and we have not responded to them in regards to that funding for the opera funds to assist. It was put in place to, to, to coincide with law enforcement and to work with them as well, and also the court system. So we have to see, see what we're gonna do about that. Um, I wanna also shout out my Madison Harris. I don't know if you guys saw it in the paper. Uh, her parents and the salmon, they contacted me to assist her with doing the coat drive. She is a first grader who received funding for her birthday and wanted to use her birthday money to buy coats for her peers. And on third month, Thursday, Thursday, we actually went, no, was it Thursday? Yeah, Thursday, we went and donated four hu, four, forty-seven coats to Live Oak Elementary. And this young lady, that's what she wanted to do, be a philanthropist and give back to her community. So this first grader did this with her funding. So thanks so much for that, Madison. You're gonna do some great things. Just talk a little bit while I have this last two minutes. What we did today was very shocking, especially when you've done it for many years the same way. It's, I, I, I swear I'm the first of many. I, I need to get a plaque on everything I've been the first of. I've been the first of many of every change, every policy change, when it's time for me to do stuff, and he is right. I've, I've ne, only, I haven't normally voted against anything in your, your district unless it's something that's needed for the county. I vote with y'all, but I was told this, Commissioner, they trying to slow walk you down. But let me say this, you better walk fast because I was built for this. And I'm not gonna walk slow. You're not gonna walk me down, so you can keep trying, keep trying, keep doing it. I was also told about a commissioner telling someone, he's not gonna vote with me because I called him out. No, I held you accountable. That's what we supposed to be doing. You hold me accountable. You don't see me saying I'm not gonna vote for your project or vote for what, and you're not voting for my project. When you vote against a district, you're voting against thousands of people in a community. When you telling Commissioner Sanders, we're not gonna vote to put a park in a district that's sixty-some percent black, I'm gonna put it out there, that doesn't even have a park. All the districts in Newton County have parks except District Three. When you're voting against projects, you're not voting against me. You're voting against the people here in Newton County, and please believe they are watching. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Cowell. Merry Christmas. Commissioner Cowell. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I have a whole lot to say. Other than, yeah, December eleventh at, uh, five, uh, five to six thirty, we doing the, our annual bike giveaway. I said I was not gonna let nobody change the joy that I have of giving kids in underserved areas new bicycles, and this time might be some, a few used one, two as well, and that's fine. And so if anybody wanna donate one to some kid, donate me, it would be at the West Side Precinct. And so if you, if you coming in, gonna raise a little bit of hell, I, I promise you, you go to jail.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, first, I wanna thank this board for, uh, finalizing, finally, the senior center will have a home uh, on county land that's already paid for. We don't have to pay for any land, so they have a home now, uh, in District Two, so we're excited about, uh, the senior center. So thank this board, uh, for voting to make that happen. Um, also, Mister Chair, on October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at nine forty P M., I was honored to enter the House of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated through the Sigma Eta Lambda chapter, along with my eight line brothers known as the Nine Pharaohs of Faith. Uh, the mission of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated is to develop leaders, promote brotherhood and academic excellence while providing service and advocacy for our communities. This is what our chapter, uh, has vowed to do, uh, in Newton County. I also wanted to acknowledge my chapter sponsor, uh, Brotherhood, Brother Leroy Frazier Junior, uh, my chapter recommender, Brother Joe Lee Junior, uh, my chapter dean, Brother Marcus Griffin, and my assistant chapter dean, Brother Carl Settles the Third. Uh, I do have some of my, uh, chapter brothers that are here. They stood out. Come on, stand up for me. They stood up, held out, uh, until the end. Thank you, brothers, for holding out to the end. Uh, this is, these are brothers from the Sigma Eta Lambda chapter. Uh, so we're excited that we're going to partner with Newton County to really make some great service efforts here. Um, also, in two thousand and twenty-four, I will be starting my mental health initiative. I will be working with Doctor LaCleshia Izert, who is a licensed professional counselor and mental health expert. Uh, our Board of Commissioners appointed Doctor Izert to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Development, uh, Disabilities Region Three Advisory Council as the only Newton County member, uh, by unanimous vote in Nova. as the only Newton County member, uh, by unanimous vote in November two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Dr. Izard, um, and I, over the past years, have been meeting, uh, with our council members uh, of the State Government Justice Center, Georgia Familiar Faces Project to identify county gap areas for individuals that cycle through mental health substance use treatment, homelessness, and the jails. And to build on this knowledge base, we will be working together to implement the stepping up initiative, Start Up Action Steps, in our great county. Uh, our Board of Commissioners approved our county to be a stepping up county in two thousand and nineteen. Since then, there has been no movement forward, and so the stepping up initiative is a national initiative uh, used to decrease the number of individuals with mental health and substance use conditions in the jails. We have met with our neighboring Rockdale County stepping up leaders, Commissioner Doreen Williams and Mr. Bill Carruthers, project developer, on key areas that may benefit our Newton County. And so we are extremely excited to start our two thousand and twenty-four action plan phase of the stepping up initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Um, with no further ado, we'll, um, y'all ready to go home? Y'all wanna hang out a little longer? I seek a motion that we adjourn. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson. Is there a second? The second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Don't nobody wanna stay? Nobody want to stay? Five and no.